Right, the hour of six thirty having arrived. I'll ask Alders to turn their cameras on please, and I will call to order the Common Council meeting of Tuesday, July second, two thousand and twenty four, and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you very much. Alder Uguere.
Present.
Alder Uguere is present. Alder Hampton McKinnney. Get back. Alder Knox. Wait later. Alder Latimer Burris.
Here.
Alder Latimer Burris is present. Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Madison is present. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldi- Aldi Miazzi.
Present.
Aldi Miazzi is present. Alder Rumel.
Present.
Alder Rumel is present. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, I'm here.
Alder Tischler is present. Alder Vervier.
Here.
Alder Vervier is present. Alder Vitterver.
Here.
Alder Vitterver is present. Alder Wahelia.
Here.
Alder Wahelia is present. Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Bennett is present. Alder Crell will be in a moment. Alder Duncan.
Here.
Alder Duncan is present. Alder Evers is excused. Alder Field.
Here.
Alder Field is present. Alder Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Figaro Cole is present. Alder Gavir de Rajan.
Here.
Alder Gavir de Rajan is present. Madam Mirror of Quorum.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Clerk, uh, you didn't call my name.
Very sorry. I thought you were still in transit. Uh, let me just.
Let the record show that Alder Conklin is present.
Thank you very much. Terribly sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right. Quorum having been established. And I, just a couple of things to note. Um, it's been a minute since we've been virtually, uh, fully virtual. So just remind everyone to please mute and unmute themselves. Um, keep your mics muted when you're not actively speaking. Um, use the raise hand feature and, um, would ask Alders in particular to please keep your cameras on so we know that you're here and we have maintained quorum. Also note for the record, uh, clerk that Alder Knox is now here.
So noted.
Thank you. Um, and then one other item in opening remarks. Uh, we may yet more formally recognize this, but I just wanted to note since, um, I believe this Friday is his last day that Assistant Fire Chief Chase Stedman is retiring after many years of service to the city of Madison. Um, and not least among them, his involvement with the CARES program. And so I just wanted to say a public thank you to Assistant Chief Stedman and, um, acknowledge his retirement and his service here. And if you didn't get a chance to come to his retirement party, um, you might drop him a note. Again, he is here for this week, um, and then we'll be out after that. So. Um, with that, are there any disclosures or recusals on items on tonight's agenda? Going once. Alder Field.
Thank you, Mayor. On item ninety-three, I'm an employee of UW Madison. That won't affect my vote on this item.
Thank you, Alder Fields. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, I'm also a employee of UW and Network. Same, same item. Won't affect my judgment.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other disclosures or recusals on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Then we will go directly to the, oh, Alder Bennett.
This is not a disclosure or a recusal, but I just wanted to know on the agenda, uh, item twenty-four lists Alder, um, former Alder Patrick Heck instead of my name.
Thank you, Alder. The clerk can, uh, make that edit. And just in general, if there are editorial changes to the agenda that need to be made, feel free to, um, email the clerks directly and they can take care of those. Thank you, Alder. Um, any other disclosures, recusals? If not, then President Figaro Cole, the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the consent agenda is moved with the recommend- recommended action list there for each item on the agenda, including public hearings, except for one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items which others have separated for discussion or debate purposes. This document lists supermajority items, agenda items, recommendations different from the agenda, items for exclusion, items introduced from the floor, and agenda items with corrections. Agenda items with a su- with a supermajority of fifteen votes are legisstar item eighty-three eight-eight-eight, amending the Community Development two thousand and twenty-four operating budget to authorize the use of eighty thousand dollars in American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds for the upgrade of the Madison area out of school time, also known by MOST. That is a fifteen votes required. Legisstar item eighty-three six-seventy-eight, awarding the Public Works Contract Number nine-three-five-eight for the Burtillian Shelter on District Twelve and amending the two thousand and twenty-four capital and operating budgets of the Community Development Division to provide funding needed to complete the project. Uh, fifteen votes required. Legisstar item eighty-three nine-eight-nine, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a development agreement and authorizing a budget amendment to the two thousand and twenty-four EDD Capital Budget Tit forty-six to fund three hundred and forty-four thousand tax increment finance loan to University Park Commons Two or its assigns, or is assigned to construct approximately sixty-eight units of affordable housing located at six-two-five cent per lane from District Eleven. Fifteen votes required and the recommended action is to adopt the substitute. That's agenda item ninety-seven. Agenda item eighty-three eight-seventy-seven, these are items that are, um, that had recommendations different from the agenda. Eighty-three eight-seventy-seven, creating section three point zero seven-three of the Madison General Ordinance related to informed consent to permit the office of the city attorney to communicate information related to its representation of the city in order to consult with other attorneys for purposes of collaboration and more effective legal representation. The recommendation from the com- the, uh, Common Council Executive Committee is commu- committee is to adopt. Legisstar item eighty-three nine-eight-nine, uh, does, I'm sorry, does item, um, I, le- let's say item eighty-three nine-eight-nine, does the fifteen item vote and the, I just read that one and the recommendation was to adopt the substitute. So I'm not going to read that one again. Um, legisstar item eighty-three nine-one-seven, adopting the sexual harassment appendix to the elected and appointed official code of ethic conduct. Um, the Common Council Executive Committee recommendation was to adopt. Agenda items that were excluded by Alders or by speakers registered by noon on July second. Legisstar item eighty-two eight-seventy-one, is a public hearing for a new license for the Refuel Pantry Inc. At twenty-seven oh-two East Washington Avenue, the agent is Melissa McPherson for a Class A beer and a Class A liquor, Class A cider, um, in the Police Sector five-oh-two on District Twelve. Alder Madison requested, um, ex- exclusion and we have speakers registered. Agenda item eighty-three seven-one-four is another licensed public hearing for Handy Spot at one-oh-eight. Handy Spot one-oh-eight at five-five-five-one East Park Boulevard. Agent is Harvinder Singh, is for a Class A beer in the Police District five-twenty. Um, this is on District Seventeen. We have registered speakers. Um, item seventy-nine is legisstar, legisstar eighty-three six-thirty-two, which is amending the ten-point-one-eighty, the ten-point-eighteen and one-point-zero-eight-three-eight. Um, and creating section twenty-seven point zero five-two DD of the Madison General Ordinance to update the city large item, item, item collection and electronic waste recycling ordinances and to update the bond schedule accordingly. This item was, um, the recommendation from, from the Board of Public Works is for this item to be, um, referred back to the Finance Committee on seven-eight and back to the Common Council on seven-sixteen. Um, I'm sorry. Let me just say that again. It's to go to Finance Committee on seven-eight, back to the Board of Public Works on seven-ten, and coming back to Council on seven-sixteen. But according to NGO two-two-nine-five, a public comment will not be taken onto the files before the Common Council for final action. I actually contacted the speaker, there was one registered speaker, and let them know that the item will not be discussed at this meeting. But it's on the agenda because we had a registered speaker. And then agenda item one-one-six or legisstar number eighty-three eight-thirty, eighty-three eight-eight-three, designating City of Madison polling locations for the two thousand and twenty-four partition primary. So, um, this item was referred to this meeting. Items that are to be introduced from the floor, legisstar item eighty-four two-thirty-four. It's a public hearing for a new license for C-RAM re- retails three LLC, um, also known as Regent Street Mini Mart at fourteen-oh-one Regent Street. The agent is Mi- Minou Cauchal, um, is for a Class B combination liquor and beer. Um, and this is on District Thirteen. Alder Revere, um, put a introduction here. The item will go to the ARC on July eleven for the public hearing and back to Council on July sixteen. Then item eighty-four two-seven-seven, amending the two thousand and twenty-four adopted capital budget for traffic engineering, traffic safety infrastructure to accept one hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred eighty-four dollar grant from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the updated agreement project ID five-nine-nine-two-dash-twenty-two-dash-twelve for safe routes to school plan. Um, this is to be sent to the Finance Committee on July eighth and come back to Council on July sixteen. There were no corrections on the agenda at this time and that's the consent agenda.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, s- are there other items that Alders would like to have excluded from the agenda at this time? Alder Latimer Burris?
Um, yeah, so I just had a couple, um, that I really wanted to, uh, make a correction or send to a committee. So do you want me to go, just to say those? Sure. Okay, so number eighty-seven eight-three-five-one-eight Sales Tax, uh, Resolution. Um, I requested that go to the EOC, that that be corrected. The EOC, um, was unable to hear it for whatever reason. Um, so I want to add that on seven-eleven twenty-four, coming back to Common Council on seven-sixteen. Uh, the next one I'm looking at is, just one minute, please. Um, looking at, uh, item number one twenty-eight eight-four-one-six-seven, I'd like to add a referral to the CCEC on, uh, seven-sixteen. Um, I would like to, uh, pull, um, I don't have the number, but I don't have the item number, but the number is eight-three-nine-one-seven for explanation, just cl- clarity on the ethical conduct.
I'm, I'm sorry, Alder. I, I need an agenda number.
Okay, we'll come back to that one. Item number is eight, I'm sorry.
Is that item one-seventeen?
One-seventeen.
Thank you very much, Alder.
Oh, one-seventeen. I had it right in front of my face here. Thank you, Alder Knox. And then, uh, also number one-twenty-five eight-three-eight-two-zero, uh, just for an explanation, uh, everybody's clear on the Bloomberg intern going into the, the executive office, the mayor's office. Um, and I think that's it. Just let me just make sure. Oh, uh, let's see. This is another one that I don't have the item number. It's, uh, it's eight-three-eight-seven-seven. Let's see if I can quick find it. It's about the, um, informed consent legal. I'd just like to get a little explanation on that.
Item eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Okay. All right. Lots of stuff today.
All right. So Alder, just so I'm clear, you're asking for separation on items eighty-four, one-seventeen and one-twenty-five. And you're asking for-
Let me just, yeah.
And you're asking for additional referrals on items eighty-seven and one-twenty-eight?
Okay, could, eighty-seven and one-twenty-eight, yes. And then one-seventeen, one-twenty-five and eighty-four additional explanation, yes.
Thank you, Alder.
All right. Thank you.
Are there any additional exclusions? Alder Tischler.
Yeah, just for clarification, um, item number seventy-eight, I was told that's going to be referred to, uh, uh, July, uh, July twenty second, uh, meeting. Has wanted to confirm that. I don't, I don't have anything in writing in front of me.
Um, are you referring to item seventy-nine regarding large item?
No, referring to item, um, seventy-eight, the, uh, native tall grass long area, uh. I was told that's going to be referred to a later, a later meeting. I just don't have anything in front of me. That's, that confirms that.
Yes, seventy-eight should be referred. If staff can tell me what item, what meetings they should go to. We do need to make that motion. Point of order, Mayor? Consent. Point of order, Alder Curry.
There's an agenda note saying that the recommendation is to re-refer to Sustainable Madison of seven-twenty-two and Council of eight-six.
Thank you. If it was a snake, it would have bit me.
Thank you.
All right. But, but let's just memorialize that. Uh, so it, because it's an agenda note, that is the recommendation. Um, so absent other action, Alder Tischler, that's what will happen?
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Alder Latimer Burris, is your hand still up or up again?
No, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine. Alder Bennett.
Just a point of information, uh, we have to vote on additional referrals, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on the additional referrals for eighty-seven and one-twenty-eight?
I will ask if there's consent on those. If there's not, we'll have a vote on them.
Okay, great.
Vice President Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. For item one-sixteen, is there, I, I know it's being pulled, but is there a way to move the substitute since there had been approval of the lead sponsor and the president for that one instead of pulling it from the agenda?
Yes, uh, Vice President Duncan, thank you. I was going to suggest that. Um, that in fact, we not separate that unless there's a separate request for that, but that we move the sub. Um, okay, y'all have to put your hands down also when you're done, please, and thank you. Uh, Alder Latimer Burris.
Sorry, I just, I, I was writing as you said the last, uh, where Alder Duncan said something about some-
Wait, I will repeat the whole thing, Alder Latimer Burris. We're not there yet.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any additional requests for separation? Or, you know, referrals or substitutes or whatever we'd like to do? Okay, seeing none. Let's try this. Following our supermajority items, eighty-five and ninety-two both require fifteen votes. We have recommendations different from the agenda on ninety-seven, uh, where the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. Note that that is also a fifteen vote item. And one-sixteen, where the recommendation is to adopt the substitute. We will separate tonight from the consent agenda items three, sixteen, eighty-four, one-seventeen and one-twenty-five. We have two introductions from the floor. And we have two requests for additional referrals. On item eighty-seven, an additional referral to EOC on seven-eleven. On item one-twenty-eight, a referral to CCEC on seven-sixteen. If there's no objection, we'll include those additional referrals, uh, under items with recommendations different from the agenda. Uh, if there is objection, we'll take them up at the end of the meeting. Alder Rumel?
Mayor, I heard you say one-fifteen to, um, or one-sixteen instead of one-fifteen to adopt the substitute for the, the, the primary locations. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly or you said it correctly. So we're all on the same page.
Yes, that's item one-sixteen, Alder.
Yes, I thought you said one-sixteen, but thank you.
Yep. All right. So one more time. Items eighty-five and ninety-two require fifteen votes. Uh, recommendations different from what is printed on the agenda. Ninety-seven is to adopt the substitute, also a fifteen vote item. Um, excuse me, I'm slightly out of order here. Eighty-seven is an additional referral to EOC. Uh, ninety-seven is the substitute with fifteen votes. One-sixteen is the substitute. And one-twenty-eight is an additional referral to CCEC. Any other items? Okay. If not, then President Figaro Cole. A motion.
A motion to adopt, but then we take a vote and it fails or we just make an amendment to the motion?
I'm I'm asking for a motion on the entire consent agenda, Alder.
I'm sorry, can let me clarify a point of clarification, so eighty-seven and one-twenty-eight got pulled from the agenda to discuss?
No. The Alder is asking for additional referrals, I'm proposing to include them in uh recommendations with different from what's printed on the agenda. If anyone wishes to object to those additional referrals, we'll take them up at the end of the agenda.
Okay, so when do we object?
At the end of me now, you object now.
Now, so I'm objecting to that. I I, yes, I'm objecting to eighty-seven and one-twenty-eight. Well, not the eighty-seven, for at least the one-twenty, I don't have, I have an explanation for that.
Okay, so we will discuss the referral, we will separate then item one-twenty-eight. Uh, we can, uh, this attorney can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we can take that, um. Perhaps we could take that vote before we vote on the consent agenda?
I can explain real quick, too.
Depending, then we can move to the consent agenda. Let's see if there's any objection on item eighty-seven. Seeing no objection on item eighty-seven, we'll include that um referral. Okay, so then on item one-twenty-eight, uh first of all, Alder Latimer Burris, can you uh provide an explanation for the additional referral? That is required under our ordinances, I keep forgetting that.
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I point of information real quick?
Point of information, Alder Figaro call?
Yes, so I, they came to my attention from the last two meetings ago that the ordinance for C C E C only collects um referrals for things that are not, that are not addressing other committees, so this one is actually a finance committee item. So technically, based on the ordinance, shouldn't come to C C E C unless I'm wrong, but that's what my understanding or I got plenty of people explaining that to me last time when I sent something to C C E C that was already sent to other committees. So I don't know if attorney wants to explain on that.
Thank you, Alder, Figaro call. Uh. Getting a little out of order here, I just, in order to be compliant with our ordinances, I'd like Alder Latimer Burris to please state the reason for the referral. And then we can get an opinion from the attorney on that.
Thank you.
Alder Latimer Burris?
Actually, Mayor, I would ask that we hear the attorney uh opinion from the attorney, so maybe within that, it'll get clarification um about the um, the procedural, um, let me look at the words that are here. The rules and procedure for deliberations. That floor deliberations, I guess I have questions about it, um, I don't know if it's the memo that that uh President um Figaro Cole had sent around or whatnot, so maybe we can hear from the attorney, I would ask. And maybe that will be enough clarification. Where I wouldn't have to argue for a referral.
Okay, Attorney Haas, the question is the jurisdiction of C C E C.
Sure, um, thank you, Mayor, the under uh thirty-three-point-one-three, the um authority of C C E C is to receive referrals that are not referred to other committees. Uh, hold public hearings on those and make reports and recommendations on those referrals. Uh, also says um ordinances and resolutions relating to the structure and function of the council or other city committees should routinely be referred to the committee. Um, other authority listed is uh to discuss topics that may form the basis of future legislation to be introduced to the council and discuss topics of broad concern to the city that may not be considered in any other committee or that cross the authority of several committees, so I guess the the question is whether you know, any of that authority of the committee would be uh would give a jurisdiction over that agenda item.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Latimer Burris?
Yeah, I would just ask um if the author could explain what's the intent with uh, you know, the procedures and the rules, as it says, of course, that says um establishing rules and procedure for common council deliberations on the City of Madison twenty-twenty-five capital and operating budget. Um, my concern here is, um, you know, sometimes we get tired when people get long-winded and we wanna um, you know, we tried to pass ordinances before to get people to shorten their testimony um, or their opinions, and I want to make sure that we're not shut out as we're doing so- something that's so important, and it does cross all sectors, it affects every department and probably every committee. The budget that would that would be.
Uh, Alder, uh, this is not a time to discuss the item, it's not noticed for that, um, so
I was, Mayor, if you if you would, I was explaining why I asked for the referral, this is all in reference to the referral, not the item itself.
Okay, thank you. Um, that clarification is Jermaine, um. Uh, you know, I don't my feeling is that, you know, you all can choose if you want it referred or not, um, uh, you know, I I don't think it's um, an item that C C E C couldn't discuss, um, but uh, you know, ultimately, I think it's up to you, this is, this is a thing that we do every year. Establishing the ground rules for budget meetings, and it's a fairly uh mundane item, honestly, um, but if you all want to talk about it at C C E C, that's up to you. So the question is referral of item one-twenty-eight to C C E C. I'll note that it is being referred to finance. Um, Alder Latimer Burris has moved referral, is there a second?
Second for the sake of discussion.
Alder Barbara Harrington McKinney will uh second, and um if the clerk could please note that Alder Harrington McKinney is present.
So noted.
Thank you. So the question is referral uh of item one-twenty-eight to C C E C on seven-sixteen uh with uh referral also to finance on seven-eight and then council on seven-sixteen. On the question, Alder Latimer Burris?
Sure, and you know, I think that you make an excellent point, Mayor, that you, this normally, this is very uh, you know, mundane, very um, you know, you know, standard procedure, you know, almost boring, um, but we will remember that this is the first year that we've um been asked to come in on the budget early, we've had pretty intense meetings, uh, we've gone um and and done a a light dive or some people call it deep dive into the budget, and we should just make sure that we're um crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is. Now, if my colleagues disagree that we shouldn't, that's fine, I can only ask to make sure that we get as much information as possible, as we will um be counted on um for what happens next in the city. So that's part of that, those comments are in reference strictly to having our executive committee that kind of rules the common council um take a look at it.
Thank you, Alder. Is there additional discussion on the question of referral? Seeing none, anticipating disagreement, all those in favor of referral, aye, those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, on referral, Alder Yugar?
No.
Alder Yugar, no, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Yes.
Alder Harrington Harrington McKinney, aye, Alder Knox?
No.
Alder Knox, no, Alder Latimer Burris?
Yes.
Alder Latimer Burris, aye, Alder Madison?
No.
Alder Madison, no, Alder Martinez Rutherford?
No.
Alder Martinez Rutherford, no, Alder Miyazi?
Yes.
Alder Miyazi, aye, Alder Rommel?
No.
Alder Rommel, no, Alder Tischler?
Yes.
Alder Tischler, aye, Alder Revere?
No.
Alder Revere, no, Alder Viver?
No.
Alder Viver, no, Alder Willheler?
Aye.
Alder Willheler, aye. Alder Bennett?
No.
Alder Bennett, no, Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Conklin, no, Alder Curry?
No.
Alder Curry, no, Alder Duncan?
No.
Alder Duncan, no, Alder Evers is excused, Alder Field?
No.
Alder Field, no, Alder Figaro call?
No.
Alder Figaro call, no, Alder Govindarajan?
No.
Alder Govindarajan, no, I show five ayes, fourteen noes.
Thank you, with five ayes, the motion to refer fails, so that will not be included on the consent agenda. So we're back to the question of the consent agenda, I'll just go through one more time. Um, items eighty-five and ninety-two uh are fifteen vote items. Recommendations different from the agenda, item eighty-seven will be referred to E the E O C on seven-eleven. Item ninety-seven will adopt the substitute, which requires fifteen votes. Item one-sixteen will adopt the substitute, following items are excluded, three, sixteen, eighty-four, one-seventeen, and one-twenty-five. And then we have two items that are being introduced from the floor. President Figaro call a motion, please.
Move to adopt. Second to the agenda.
Moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection. Consent agenda is adopted. And we will go on to public comment. So let me just, right, so uh our first item for public comment is item number three, which is a public hearing on a new license for refuel pantry at twenty-seven oh-two East Washington Avenue. Our first registrant is Jane Jorgensen of District Fifteen, representing the Madison Public Library Hawthorne Branch. Uh, to be followed by Nick Pajevak, I know that's not how I pronounce it, I'm sorry, Nick, to be followed by Jamar Gary. Uh, do we have Jane? All right, Jane. Uh, you should be able to speak.
Good evening, my name is Jane Jorgensen, and I'm the supervisor of the Hawthorne and Penny Libraries from Madison Public Library. Tonight, I'd like to talk to you about Hawthorne Library in particular, and what we see on a week-to-week, often day-to-day basis on the mall property, which is directly across from the location under discussion for this agenda item. We've logged twenty-four alcohol-related events in the first months of the year inside the library, and have witnessed many more in the mall parking lot which are not logged as they didn't involve library staff. I've been the supervisor of the Hawthorne Library for almost ten years, and at that time, I've seen the incidences of intoxication and active drinking on the mall property increase a lot. We frequently have people drinking all day long in front of the library, in front of the other businesses in the mall, and all up and down the parking lot. Sometimes individuals, but often in groups who, as they become more intoxicated, become more everything else. Sometimes too friendly, sometimes more angry or sad, sometimes a combination of any and all of these. When they are so intoxicated, they can and have harassed customers and library staff. In one instance, a young person was, a young staff person was followed to her car one afternoon by a man who was known to us. As she got close to her car, she realized E, not his real name, was standing between her and her car, she greeted him and immediately realized he was intoxicated to the point he didn't even realize who she was. As she got her keys out, E stood close enough to the point their shoulders were touching, and she backed up and told E she needed some space to get into her car. He continued to try to engage with her, moved closer again and touched her back, while she tried to disengage with him by saying she would see him later. She noticed the police car driving nearby, and as E turned to look, she again tried to get in her car and shut the door. But he put his arm out and blocked her, the police officer got out of his vehicle vehicle and began walking over, and E backed up. She was able to finally get in her car and shut the door, the police officer did check with her, and she told him no further action was needed. Staff person was rattled by all of this, as anyone would be. But because she knew him, she talked to E a few days later when he was not intoxicated, she asked if he remembered the incident, he did not. Then she let him know I'm comfortable he'd made her, he apologized. This is one example among many I could give you, some with staff and others involving customers who are trying to use the library or other businesses in the mall. In the case of E, it was clear that alcohol and how intoxicated he was was the factor in play in terms of how he behaved with my staff. This instant ended okay, but I worry about the next. I have no actual knowledge of where anyone who was drinking on the, in this neighborhood gets their alcohol. I cannot say that the alcohol we see being consumed on the property has been purchased locally at any of the multiple liquor locations that are within a one-block radius of the library. But I can say that alcohol factors in on a lot of the behaviors we see that make it less safe and welcoming for everyone. The staff at the Hawthorne Library are passionate about providing service to our neighborhood community members, some of whom are very high need. And our goal is to make progress towards more safety for all.
And that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registrant is Nick Pajevak of District Twelve, to be followed by Jamar Gary. Nick?
Yep, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, um, hello, everyone, my name's Nick Pivich, I live in District Twelve um on East Mifflin Street, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the um, to this agenda item. Um, I, I guess I would implore um, the council members to consider just a handful of things, one, um though this is a class A license, and as part of the application, um, right, the um applicant doesn't necessarily need to or can skip over section E of the application, which is where the um communication of the grocery receipts are to kind of understand like the um, the impact of alcohol sales on the success of a business. Um, given the desire to sell only um beer and all the restrictions that are currently, in all the, sorry, all the conditions that are currently being discussed on this. Um, I don't necessarily see how um the impact of selling beer or not um at this location is really going to make a difference in the success of this gas station. Um, there are liquor stores on both sides of East Washington within um a mere few blocks, and as someone who um travels down East Washington, like right, I um would, I guess I'd struggle to see how um the offer of beer in this location is going to really make a huge difference, given the other commercial opportunities. Um, second, I would point to things such as, um, obviously, we are well aware of um this stretch of East Washington, and trying to understand the ways in which um, community is served in this location, obviously, there have been decisions specifically with the strip mall across the street with decisions such as closing Pauling Street, um, which allows you to get behind the shopping center to deal with incidents and things that have occurred in this area. And um, I guess I would um just kind of finish my um statement by really, you know, I think that um, as I have been navigating, understanding my role in the community as chair of a city commission here in the city. Um, you know, it's the job of c- um boards, um committees and commissions to really focus on their specific topic. And then it's the job of common council to really try to take that holistic picture of how decisions, um, you know, which obviously have conflicting needs. This is the role of um politics in our society, is how do we try to address needs of a variety of interests? And to make a decision that um is supportive of the greater community need rather than um you know, like one specific cause, and take into consideration health and public safety and things like that, and the ability to reject this, thank you.
Thank you, our next registrant is Jamar Gary of District Eighteen, representing the Madison Police Department.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, uh, my name is Jamar Gary, I'm captain of the M P D's North District, so I'm here picking up, speaking as staff, not as a uh registered speaker, but I'm here because Alder Madison asked me to speak to the cultural service data at twenty-seven oh-two East Washington Avenue where these this license at twenty-seven oh two East Washington Avenue, where this license was applied for, and then kind of give a brief summary of the issues the police department has been responding to in that area. So first, in reference to that call for service data at twenty-seven oh two East Washington, this data was pulled back in May for Alder Madison, and it was about two years' worth of data going back.
Captain, I'm sorry. I'm going to interrupt you. If you're here as staff, we will have questions for you when we take up the item.
Okay.
And, you know, staff are allowed to address the council in their personal capacity. So I wasn't sure if that's why you were here, but since you identify as being here as staff, we'll take up questions for staff once we take up the item.
Point of order, information, Mayor. Captain Gary, your volume is wavering in and out, so I don't know if you're close to the speaker. If you could get closer, please.
Thank you, Alder Curry. Alder Madison, is it also a point?
It was two things. Well, I'm not sure where to access, but I was going to ask for more time for Jane. But Jane also, I believe, I just want to make sure someone from the library, and I believe Tana will be available for staff questions. But I want to be respectful of Jane's time and just ask for more time for her and ask her to repeat the numbers she shared at the beginning of her statement.
So Alder, that's a question for a registrant. We'll get there.
Yep.
You do it the same way every meeting, folks. All right. So apologies, Captain. We'll come back to you. And perhaps you can check on your mic in the meantime. And with that, we have no other registrants wishing to speak. So on item three, are there questions for registrants? Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. For Jane, I just liked Jane to, if you needed more time to finish what you were sharing. And also, in the beginning, I was just getting my note, my paper out. If you wouldn't mind just repeating, I think, maybe the first sentence or two, where you shared some numbers.
Yes. Can you hear me? I mentioned that we've logged twenty-four alcohol-related events in the first months of the year inside the library. We don't track necessarily contacts out in the parking lot unless that's reported to us by a customer or it involves a staff person. We have also had twenty-three incidents, excuse me, three incidents where we banned somebody from the library due to alcohol. So those are the numbers I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions for registrants?
Yeah, for the same person?
Go ahead.
Do you have security? Can you hear me?
Jane, that's a question. I was still unmuted. Sorry. We have security in the evenings, what we call a monitor who does customer service and but does handle issues with behavior in the library. They do not go outside of the library for safety reasons.
So when you say in the evening, does that cover all of the operating hours of the library or no?
No. No, we're open ten to eight, Monday through Friday, and nine to five on Saturday, and we have thirty hours of security monitors. So we use that in the evenings, generally either three to eight or five to eight, depending on the staff person and Saturday afternoons.
So were the numbers you're providing for the year?
They're for this year so far.
Okay. How does that compare to previous years?
Previous years, we had twenty-four last year, so it's actually gone up. If you think about it, twenty-four this year so far, and last year we had twenty-four total in our log.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Are there other questions for either of our registrants? If not, thank you. We will move on then to item sixteen. Item sixteen is a public hearing on a new license for Handyspot one oh eight LLC at fifty-five fifty-one East Park Boulevard. We have one registrant wishing to speak, Harvinder Singh of District Seventeen. Harvinder? You should be unmuted. Oh, here we go. You should, you should have a prompt to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Bobby.
Yes. My name is Harvinder Singh.
Yes, you have three minutes. Please go ahead.
Handyspot one oh eight, five 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 one East Park Boulevard. And Madison.
This is, this is your chance to address the council if you have comments for them?
Comment?
If, if not, we can see if they have questions for you.
Okay.
Are there any questions for the registrant? Alder Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions for the business. And after, as usual, chatting with MPD about a liquor license in my district, I support this business. So I think there may just have been some miscommunication, but I don't have any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Harvinder. Then we'll take up your license in a few minutes. All right. Any additional questions for that registrant? Seeing none. Then seventy-nine, we do not, we've deferred on seventy-nine. And that is all of the registrants we have wishing to speak. And the clerk is clarifying for me on item sixteen that we believe the registrant wishes to request the council to grant the license, whereas the current recommendation from ALRC is to re-refer. So just clarifying that. All right. That is public comment. And so we'll go on to item two, which is a staff presentation on homeless services eviction prevention and our MAD cap program. I believe we're starting with Director O'Keefe. I don't know, Director O'Keefe, if you need the ability to share your screen?
Yes, I do. I think I do.
If the tech host could please make that possible.
Hi, Mayor. It should be possible. It was set up at the beginning of the meeting, so there should be a button at the bottom of the screen that says share.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We've been asked for a brief presentation on homeless and eviction prevention services and on the Madison Customer Assistance Program. I will handle the bulk of this presentation, and Director Kumar from the Water Utility will finish it up. We'll do our best to respect the request for brevity, but these are topics to which we could easily devote a good deal of time. Let's start with homeless services. I think it is important to begin by making sure we are all on the same page with respect to who we are talking about in discussions around homelessness. There are a variety of definitions, all certainly valid, but each describes somewhat different groups. The City of Madison responds to homelessness as part of a broader countywide coalition of organizations called the Homeless Services Consortium, and its collective efforts represent the Dane County Continuum of Care. The COC is really a creature of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which has used its financial leverage to encourage a more coordinated and collaborative response to homelessness. So HUD has established definitions for homelessness, but the one around which HUD funds are most closely aligned is this category-one definition. Literally homeless describes persons who are using local shelter facilities, being supported in transitional, which is to say temporary housing, or who are unsheltered, for example, living in cars or parks or other places not meant for human habitation. I mention this because the definition does not include a number of important groups that frequently get attention. In Madison Dane County, for example, individuals or families without housing who live in informal and often unstable doubled-up arrangements, usually with family or friends, or who self-paid to live in local motels or hotels. But generally, when we talk about homelessness, we are focused on this category-one definition. The population of persons experiencing homelessness is not a static one, rather, it changes daily as people experience or resolve their loss of housing or move into or leave the City of Madison. The method used at the local level across the country to estimate the level of homelessness is the HUD-mandated annual point-in-time survey, an event in which, on a designated night in January, volunteers undertake an organized effort to count the people who are in local shelters, in transitional housing, or in unsheltered settings. Though these efforts, at least in the Madison area, have improved markedly over the years, the point-in-time survey is widely acknowledged to be an imperfect process that undercounts the number of people who are unhoused. Nevertheless, it remains the most recognized measure of the level of homelessness. Here in Dane County, the point-in-time numbers have held fairly steady over the past fifteen years, just under the seven-hundred-person mark. The rise coming out of the Great Recession gave way to a noticeable decline in the mid-two thousand teens. That was about the time that the first units of affordable housing brought on by the city's Affordable Housing Initiative came online. Like the rest of the country, we experienced a sharp increase with the emergence of COVID in two thousand twenty to twenty-one, followed by a comparable decline as Madison and Dane County deployed the massive amounts of federal assistance that were made available to provide temporary housing support and prevent evictions. Another way to see these numbers, since two thousand and nine, Dane County's population has grown by twenty percent. In that same span, however, the number of unhoused persons identified in annual point-in-time surveys and measured on a per-thousand, a per-ten-thousand-population basis has actually declined by nearly five percent. Couple of other quick data points, because I'm such a data nerd. Seven in ten persons found in the survey to be unhoused were single, and by a two-to-one margin, they identified as male. While the number of persons who are unsheltered rose slightly from a year ago, from about eighty to about ninety, their numbers remain below historic levels. We think, at least in part, a reflection of the availability of better shelter facilities. And by the way, I don't think I mentioned that for purposes of our account, people using the Occupy Madison Tiny Home Villages and the Dairy Drive Campground are deemed to be unsheltered. The most notable fact about our numbers is the disproportionate representation within the homeless community of people of color. People of color accounted for half of all those found to be homeless in the two thousand twenty-four survey, despite making up just sixteen percent of Dane County's population, and more specifically, fully forty percent identified as Black, African-American, or African, though that group represents just six percent of the county's population. Sadly, these numbers are not unique to two thousand twenty-four. They have persisted for many years. The Dane County COC has access to a little over sixteen million dollars annually to support homeless services. This does not include any COVID-related funding, because that is one-time money, as you all know. City funds represent just twelve percent of that sixteen-million-dollar total. Most of it, over two-thirds, is derived from federal and county sources. And it will surprise probably no one that the state contributes very little. I mentioned that the local service organizations function as a system and have established and tracked system performance measurements. Among them are the number of unduplicated persons served by the system over the course of the year. This is different from the point-in-time survey, which is a snapshot in time count. Performance measures include the average length of time that someone is homeless, the number of persons that exit homelessness, that exit homelessness to permanent housing, and their success rate, measured as the percentage of people who return to homelessness within a specified period of time. I think that is a six-month period of time. This chart tracks the length of homelessness over the past five years. It shows a steep increase. As in the early response to COVID, steps were taken and federal funding provided to provide safe shelter venues, including in local hotels. And then a sharp decline that followed as efforts shifted to securing stable housing using federal funds that were made available for direct rental assistance and rapid rehousing programs. And this slide illustrates the impact of the higher commitment of resources and corresponding higher rates of success in rehousing families as opposed to singles. As I mentioned, the city spends about two million dollars each year to support activities within the COC, mostly city levy, and a small amount of federal pass-through funds. Most of that money is allocated through a competitive RFP process. And that money is next scheduled to go out to bid in two thousand twenty-five for contracts that will take effect in two thousand twenty-six. So what you see here are allocations among these functional areas that were the result of the most recent RFP process, now nearly four years ago. Our emphasis is currently on supporting crisis response and permanent housing efforts. I want to say again that these figures do not reflect the approximately, about a hundred million dollars of one-time federal money that flowed through the Community Development Division beginning in two thousand twenty-one, money from the CARES Act, from ARPA, and from the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, money that was used to support many of these same activities. ERA funds supported eviction and homeless prevention and permanent housing activities, and ARPA was crucial, still is, in sustaining shelter and permanent housing strategies. But it gives you a sense of the scale of that infusion of cash that occurred over a relatively short period of time, just a few years. Let's talk quickly about crisis response, an area for which the pandemic really has had a dramatic and enduring impact in this community. Families continue to be supported primarily by the Salvation Army. Once co-located with the Single Women Shelter on East Washington Avenue, the family shelter currently operates out of a former nursing home on Milwaukee Street that was purchased and converted by the city for that use. The site supports about thirty-five families, about fifty percent more than the previous site could. And it allows the Salvation Army to offer a twenty-four-hour-a-day service to families, something that it could not do at its previous location. At the same time, the family's departure from East Washington Avenue increases capacity there for single women. And so the numbers of single women that the Salvation Army is able to serve has also increased. These arrangements will continue pending the Salvation Army's planned construction of a new shelter at the East Washington Avenue site that will, when completed, reunite the family in single-women shelter facilities. Meanwhile, the men's shelter, now operating out of a temporary location on Zire Road, continues to experience very high utilization levels. Pre-pandemic, it was quite rare to see a hundred and fifty men in a single night. That usually only during periods of inclement weather. Now the shelter often serves more than twice that number. Catholic Charities continues to run the Beacon Daytime Resource Center, where showers, laundry services, lunchtime meals, and access to a variety of other services is available. Dairy Drive, the first and only legal campground in Madison. Dairy Drive, the first and only legal campground in Madison, offers accommodations and onsite services for people unable or unwilling to use congregate shelter. It has capacity for 29 users. City and county resources support robust street outreach services for persons who are unhoused and unsheltered. Their primary function is is to work to connect people to resources. They are especially vigilant during episodes of extreme weather and have funds available to them to pay for short term hotel stays when conditions are life or health threatening. So the pandemic did not create the need for a new men's shelter. It merely hastened the day of reckoning for what was an ill-equipped and under-resourced operation that had endured for over 30 years. And it wasn't just the venue. This first chart shows the annual operating budget pre pandemic, a time when, in which one or two employees staff the facility overnight. Men who showed up under the influence or had used the facility more than 90 days were turned away. Porchlight staff spent part of the daytime washing and drying linens. There was no security and no health screening at intake, and community volunteer groups took turns preparing and serving evening and breakfast meals, all at a cost of less than $600,000 a year. Today, a shelter intentionally modified to reduce barriers to entry, no 90 day limit, no sobriety test, has succeeded in convincing many to use the facility rather than sleep outdoors as many did in the past. Accordingly, utilization levels have risen and staffing levels with them. Catered meals have replaced those once prepared by volunteers. Cleaning and intake protocols have become more involved and more costly. Guests have access to showers and storage space. Paid security helps ensure the facility is safe and so on. I think without question, today's shelter is of higher quality and and is more humane than than what it replaced. But those improvements have come at a steep cost in annual expense now more than four times what it was in the basement of Grace Episcopal Church. And of course, none of this could have been possible without the federal funds that I that I mentioned earlier. Still today and through next year, federal dollars continue to provide most of the money needed to sustain shelter operations. Similarly, the influx of federal funding through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program provided a badly needed boost to renter households in Madison. Nearly $90 million of ERA funding flowed to Madison, much of which went to help renters pay their rent and utility bills primarily through what we knew as the Dane Core Program. In Madison, we also diverted some ERA funds, about $25 million in all, to support a collaborative effort that provided housing related services, including housing counseling, mediation services, legal representation, and rent assistance to tenants tenants who were at risk of eviction. To date, some 1,600 households have been helped through the Eviction Diversion and Defense Partnership, and the city has committed funds needed to sustain this effort through September of 2025, the point in time at which those federal ERA funds must be used.
Jim, let me pause you. Alder Field, did you have a question or a point?
I had a question. It can wait till the end if that's more appropriate, Mayor.
Yeah, let's let's get to the presentation and take questions at the end. Thank you, Alder. Go ahead, Jim.
And and Mayor and Alder, as it turns out, that concludes my presentation, and and I'm prepared now to to turn this over to Director Kumar to wrap it up, and then be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Director O'Keefe. Director Kumar?
Thank you, Jim, and good evening, everybody. Most of you know Madcap, but I will breeze through the basic elements of our Madcap program. What is Madcap? Madcap assists income eligible households by providing up to $30 monthly credit or discount on their municipal services bill. The Madcap program credit spreads across all six municipal services that our city provides to our customers, namely water, sewer, stormwater, urban forestry, resource recovery, and landfill. I want to take a minute to kind of walk you through how we got here. About a year ago, the water utility received approval from the Wisconsin Public Service Commission for a customer assistance program. That was the first time PSC has ever allowed a customer assistance program for the water sector in Wisconsin. The city, under the guidance of our mayor, decided to leverage that historical opportunity to expand the customer assistance service program for water to include five other city services, thereby expanding the economic safety net to cover all city services, which I think is fairly unique in the US. You know, typically, it's a water affordability program or an electricity affordability program. I rarely come across affordability program covering all cities. To the right side of the slide, what, who is eligible for Madcap? You have to be a residential customer with a municipal services bill in their name and participate in one or two of our conservation programs, mainly toilet rebate program, it's pretty popular, or you have to sign up for a water audit with Project Home we have a tie up with. They do, they come to the homes and do a water audit and suggest remedial measures to increase water efficiency. In terms of income eligibility, household income should be equal or less than 50% of the area median income. These are Housing and Urban Development Department guidelines, federal guidelines. And it is tied to the number of people in the household. And the income limits vary with the number of households, a number of people in the household. For example, if you have just one person in the household, the income limit is $44,100, and it ratchets up all the way to eight or more people and topping at $83,100, the eligibility for that household with eight people. Jim, can you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. Where where are we? After about 15 months of Madcap being in place, we received a total of 455 applications so far. We are able to approve 303, of which homeowners accounted for 202, or nearly two thirds, and renders 101 that adds up to the 303 that we have been able to approve so far. And the contact information is given on right side of the slide, but I'll stop here and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you both for the presentation. With the indulgence of the council, Jim, perhaps a first question, and I didn't ask you to prepare for this in advance, but in line with talking about the Madcap program, we have another, a number of other programs that can be accessed by low income households. I'm thinking about some of the rehab programs and assistance programs for seniors. I wonder if you could just briefly touch on those? And then we have a number of Alders with questions.
Sure, Mayor, so I don't know how much detail you want on this, but but as you mentioned, we do have a variety of of income restricted resources that are available in and around housing, whether it it is for home purchasing, or whether it's for rehabilitation of existing housing, or whether it is to help, as you said, older adults access equity in their homes to help finance their property tax payments year to year. We have a a variety of of services that are supported through neighborhood groups that include all sorts of of after school and and early childcare type programming and supports. Some of our neighborhood centers provide food pantries. So there's, there's really a plethora of of resources, most of them at the neighborhood level that that are available to folks in throughout the city.
Thank you. And for Alders that might want more information on those programs, to share them with constituents, or for folks that are listening in and might want to access those programs, what's the best place for for folks to go to get directed to some of the programs that we provide?
I'm sorry, Mayor, did you ask me that question?
I did.
Sorry, I'm distracted trying to remove my slideshow. There, I think I've can, could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. So for for folks, for Alders who wish to share, to learn more about the programs or to share information with their constituents, or for folks in Madison who might be listening in and and wanting to perhaps access those programs themselves, what's the best way for folks to get connected?
So one way is is through the new and improved Community Development Division website. We've got a fair amount of good information and contact information. I think neighborhood centers for Alders looking for for more proximate sources of information, neighborhood centers are good, good resources.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Alda Conklin, questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This would be for Director Kumar. I was just wondering what type of outreach was done, or how did you notify your clients that this, that Madcap was available?
Great question. Thank you, Alder. So we have a long, a fairly lengthy email list that people have asked us to provide information. So we send information to that whole email group. I think thousands of emails, emails went out to begin with, and our website has all the kind of information. And then we did direct outreach through two platforms. One, we have Waterwagon events. So we specifically set up a booth to dispense this information. I personally visited one or two. And we also shared this information through the social media. In fact, before, one of the Waterwagons, we had asked for people to fill up the application and come to that Waterwagon event, hoping they will come, and literally, a couple walked in with a filled in application, and we were able to process right there. But that's far in between. Hopefully, those numbers are greater. That would have been great. And then the last item that we did was to have, to work with the neighborhood resource teams, and we created door hangers specifically to to walk around those communities that they have been in place. But still, we haven't received the kind of responses we are hoping to get, so we are always in the lookout to expand it.
Okay, very good. And please forgive me. You know, I don't pay, I don't have a water bill, so I don't know, but like, you know, if your water, your sewer, your stormwater, I assume those are kind of all on one bill. But my question is, is, you know, like, there's a $30 discount, but is that for each department? That's what I'm trying to get at. Or, you know, do they have separate bills that get multiple $30 discounts, or is it just one, or how does that work?
Great question again. So it's just one bill? We call it the municipal services bill, and the water utility has traditionally been extending the service as a billing agent for the city. So we get the bill amounts from each of these other five departments. We roll it into a single bill, and we send it out in the name of municipal services bill. And the $30 is the credit for the entire bill. The water portion is 12, and 18 is from the other five departments. So it's pretty streamlined, so they don't have to chase six different doors, which is the beauty of having one single municipal service.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, Director.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Field?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for Jim O'Keefe. Jim, I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit more about the current or recently seen demand for shelter? And I mean, the emergency men's shelter, the emergency women's shelter, and then also the family shelter at the former Carminta site. So at that one, last I'd heard, the waitlist for families for those 35 rooms was more than 50 long. And if you have a more recent update since about last October, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So Alder, we we meet monthly with with shelter providers, in the case of Porchlight, even more frequently than that. But let me, let me start with families. The, I mentioned the the shelter, the family shelter facility has capacity for 35 or 36 families, depending on family size. They are and have been at capacity for quite some time. They're, they're quite active, though, in terms of taking referrals from from outreach teams. They're also quite successful at connecting families who use their shelter to housing. So there's a, there's a fairly significant turnover, and and when families are on the waitlist, it typically is a relatively short period of time before there is room available at the shelter for their use. But I want to, I want to distinguish because because one of the first things that happens when a referral is made to the family shelter is is an attempt to verify whether that family is is unsheltered. There's a much more rapid response when that is the case. It also is the case, and I don't mean at all to diminish the the need of of families that are doubled up. But it is the the priority, the primary focus of the Salvation Army to accommodate families when they are identified to be unhoused and and unsheltered. And for for quite some time, though, there is a a waitlist, not unlike what you described, the, what what we refer to as the category one waitlist, that is zeroing in on families who are unsheltered. That has been much, much lower in in single digits, and sometimes not at all. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that our ability to to assist families with children that have no shelter, that that is in place. With respect to single women, those numbers have have consistently been in the 60 to 80 range. There is capacity, as I mentioned, the the departure of families from that East Washington Avenue facility freed up a lot more room to accommodate single women, and and so the Salvation Army has been in a position for quite some time of not needing to turn single women away from shelter, and indeed are are frequently operating under capacity. Lastly, at the men's shelter, the Zaire Road Facility, we we track those numbers on a weekly basis. We we monitor on a monthly basis. They were during the the worst part of the winter pushing up against that 300 guests per night mark on an average basis. Those numbers began to creep down, and in the month of June, they were at about 240. And and so, again, we watch those very carefully. They are they are not in a position or not in in a point where they need to be turning men away, though sometimes, admittedly, during periods of extreme weather, they're, they're getting a bit crowded there.
Thank you, Jim. One quick follow up, if I may. So is there, at the family shelter, does the Salvation Army still have a day limit, 90 or otherwise?
They do not.
Okay, thank you. That was it for me.
Thank you, Alder. Alda Kavindarajan, questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. Regarding Madcap, do you, can you explain whether students meet the eligibility requirements, college students, and whether there's been and whether there's been, how the outreach to them has been?
Great question, Alder. They are eligible. You need to have your bill in your own name. It could be a renter. Mostly, students are renters. So initially, when we proposed this, there was a discussion about restricting them to just homeowners. That just doesn't work for the City of Madison. So we were able to feed in that renters could be eligible, and they are eligible now. So the students are eligible. So the three criteria, or two criteria, the bill has to be in your own name, and you have to be either a renter or a homeowner.
Okay, thank you. And then, can you share a little bit about the outreach to students? Do you already have some signed up?
I don't have specific data on the student population, but I could get and get that data to you if available, if you can discern from the applications that we have, if they are a student or not. The outreach, we haven't, we just started, as I was explaining in response to the other alder's question. We haven't specifically focused on the students. That's our next step, Jim. As a matter of fact, I was talking to our new communications manager. We met once, and we have planned to meet in two weeks' time. So since this covers all six city services, we need to ramp it up. The push should be from the city level, coordinated among all the five or six affected departments, and then targeting, whether it is neighborhood resource teams or the student community, which we have a large share of. Stay tuned for the next, next wave of outreach.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Barris?
Sure, thank you so much, Mayor. This is for General Manager Kumar. Just following up on the alder's question about students. If, I just want to make sure that I got this correct, that the bills is for water, sewer, landfill, stormwater, forestry, and resource recovery. So I'd ask, you could explain that. And then the students would have to have that in their, in their name, which I don't know what the current law is. But I think there is a law that has, is regarding, you know, two or more units with water, and if they're eligible for that. So would, do you run into any issues there as far as like students, if they're in a multi-complex, let's say in eight-plex, would they have the water bill in their name? And second to that answer, goodness gracious, I don't know if you just heard it in the background, a big thunderstorm, what is resource recovery?
Resource recovery, I think Mayor could correct me, recycling program?
So it, the, as you know, Alder, the municipal bill is a number of different charges. Only one of them is Director Kumar's purview, the water charge. So the resource recovery charge, you might reach out to the Streets Department to understand more. And in general, the, the municipal bill is, it's not a distinction about about student status that's relevant. It's, it is whether or not the living situation chooses to have, I mean, if it's individually metered and chooses to have the bill go directly to the tenant, or if it goes to the landlord. Now, when those two people are the same, you know, obviously, you get the municipal bill. If they are not, there are some situations in Madison where tenants do get and pay their municipal bill directly. There are others where they do not. And to be eligible for this program, you have to get the municipal bill directly in your name.
Okay, and I was just asking for clarification, because I know that it used to be separate bills, and it got moved under one, and that the water utility, you know, is the one that services the contract. The other thing I wanted to just get clarification for, if I could, is you did say that $12 of the 30 goes to water, and then the $18 goes to other, other, the other entities. Is that correct? I just wanted to make sure I heard it right.
Yes, Alder.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you for, you know, pushing and generating this program and getting it into play. Every dollar counts. One of the things that I wanted to ask too, just, just because somebody had asked me, the $30 does not credit to like taxes or anything. It's just those six items, right?
Yes, just those six.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. And then I, if you would, Mayor, have questions for Mr. O'Keefe. Director O'Keefe, please.
Go ahead, Alder.
Yes, first of all, I wanted to say thank you for all that you do, and you continue to do in this, this hard work that's ever-changing as we grow as a city. And one of the things that I did hear you say, and I just wanted to get clarification on that, did you say that our population has grown 28% since 2009? So about 1.86% per year? Is that what you said, Director O'Keefe?
Thank you, Alder. What I, what I said was that the Dane, what I should have said, meant to say was that the Dane County population between 2009 and 2024, 23 grew by 20%, 20%.
20%, okay, 20% overall.
County population.
County. Thank you so much for that clarification.
The city numbers are actually quite similar. It's between 1 and 2% a year.
Okay, I just wanted to hear that. I just wanted to clarify that, just as I was doing my calculating. And then, could you talk, Director O'Keefe, could you talk a little bit about the program that assistance for tax relief for seniors? Is it kind of like the, in simple layman's terms, is it comparative, not exact? Because I know everybody's very technical, but is it like a reverse mortgage, where they can take out a loan for their property taxes? And then, when the, when they die, the house is sold, and they move, and then the city collects its money? Is that how it works?
Yeah, indeed, Alder. It, it has often been referred to as a reverse mortgage loan program. We've stopped calling it that. But it is essentially that, that eligible homeowners are allowed to borrow against the equity in their home to pay their, their property taxes. And the repayment of those loans can wait until the sale of the home.
Okay. And then, about how many people or seniors participate in the, in the program year to year? I'm sure you have different numbers, but is there like an average? Or, you know, do you have any numbers off the top of your head? I'm just curious.
So I'm joined, as I so often am in in these settings, by my colleague Lynette Rhodes, who has more hands-on experience with these. The numbers have been historically quite low. And I think that we are probably, and when I say low, I think they have been in the not-so-distant-past, single digits. I think we're now pushing into that 10 to 15, 15 to 20 loans per year. Some of, some of the folks that use that program are repeat. So they'll use it more than one year, but it's still a modest program in terms of scale, in the, maybe a couple dozen.
Okay, perfect. A couple dozens better than none, right? I think that's, yeah, let me just look at 1, 2, 3. I think, yes. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was excellent.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say whoever thought up doing these regular presentations, it's really good, and I appreciate it. And this one, of course, is one of my topics I pay a lot of attention to. So no surprise to Jim, Director O'Keefe. My question is kind of about the PowerPoint. Maybe I missed it, but did you call out how we fund the Beacon and the Men's Shelter at all in your present, the shelter you did, but did you call out the Beacon? Because I know it's, we share with the county, and I just wasn't sure I caught that.
Yeah, I did not get into that level of detail at the Beacon, but you're right. It is funded by a combination of, of support from the city. I believe that we are at $200,000 a year. I don't know precisely what the county contribution is, annual contribution, but it is larger than that. The United Way contributes something on the order of $100,000 a year. And then Catholic Charities has to fundraise each year to, to make up the difference, or the total.
I've been thinking about this a lot. So at some point, when the new shelter at Bartolom opens, as far as I understand at this point, Porchlight is not prepared to have a day resources program, as well as the overnight program. So have, we've been talking with the Homeless Services Consortium members or anyone about, will we add like a second day resource center capacity for the Bartolomms space?
So we have been thinking about this a lot as well, Alder, as you might imagine. There was a point at which we, we thought that Catholic Charities and Porchlight might partner in operating the New Men's Shelter. And that implied that what we now know as the Beacon would, would actually move over to the shelter. My thinking about that has changed some. I do believe that we are building a facility that has the capacity to accommodate many of the kinds of services that are available at the Beacon. And it makes all sense, excuse me, all the sense in the world to me that, that people who use that shelter would access those services on-site. I don't think, though, like I once did, that that is going to eliminate the need for the Beacon, because there are people who don't access the Men's Shelter, who do seek services at the Beacon. I think that being able to take a lot of the burden off the Beacon by, by providing services at the shelter could make that facility, that the Beacon that is, more available and accessible to, to single women and to families that will be utilizing the Salvation Army facility across the street. Right now, there, there just isn't enough room, I think, to handle all of the demand. So, so I think there's a role for the shelter to play in providing those services. I'm not sure that it means necessarily displacing the Beacon entirely. And of course, it all hinges on our ability to garner the resources needed to support those operations and those services.
My last question, I remember when we purchased Carmenta, and it seemed like a really wise move. But at some point, when the Salvation Army rebuilds the shelter, and maybe it has capacity for both single women and women with families, do we have plans for Carmenta to continue in services? Or do we sell it for redevelopment? Do we have thoughts on that yet?
Well, it was a wise move when, when we purchased it, when you all agreed to make that purchase. And I think it, it still is. I, I, you know, we haven't really have had any kind of in-depth conversations for a while, because I think the runway for the, for the Salvation Army to complete their shelter facility is a fairly long one. So it's going to be a while before, before that Carmenta property becomes available. But, but we did purchase it with the thought that, that once the Salvation Army departed, it would make a nice redevelopment site, very likely an affordable housing development site. We just haven't had really much in the way of discussions internally, let alone with the neighborhood.
Great, thanks. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Miyazaki?
Well, actually, a couple of my questions been answered, but I just have one more. But I first want to start off by thanking Mr. Kumar and Mr. O'Keefe for the great presentation. I love the great graphs that you showed, Mr. O'Keefe, on homelessness. But I just had one question, like, what specific factors do you think are most correlated with homelessness in our community? I didn't see a graph on that, but I'm just curious about that.
Alder, you know, people at work in, in that arena are, many of them are fond of saying that there are as many causes of homelessness as there are people who experience homelessness. But, you know, it's, it's very common to see people who are unstably housed, who are dealing with chronic poverty, or unemployment, or underemployment. Something that a lot of folks don't understand is that a good number of people who are homeless and who use shelter facilities are employed, just not able to, to earn the incomes that are needed to be able to afford housing. There are, you know, one might be just a a catastrophic health event, or in a breakup of family. There are certainly people who, who struggle with mental health issues and addiction issues. Oftentimes, these, these factors are all co-occurring. But, but I think that each episode of homelessness is a unique one, and each, each homeless person has their own, their own challenges, and their own needs, and their own path back to, to stable housing. That's, that's really the best that I can do, Alder.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver?
Thanks. Jim, I had thought that the Dairy Drive Complex would be able to house couples, and you suggested tonight that it is not. Was that a change, or was, am I just misremembering?
Alder, you are misremembering. We, we, pretty early on, we concluded that, that those small shelters, though they, though they could accommodate couples, and, you know, they're, in some places, they have been used to support couples. But in, in conversations that we had internally and with, with homeless advocates, it was deemed wiser to, to, to limit the use of, of any one shelter to a single person. Couples are certainly welcome, and there have been, in the time that that facility has been in place, there have been couples that have used shelter facilities. But, but couples can have their differences. And if they're occupying the same shelter and something like that happened, there would be difficulties in, you know, deciding who would need to leave. So, so when there are couples, you know, each person is, is given their own shelter space or shelter structure, and then they, they can decide how they want to, to use that space.
So we don't have a space where a couple can be housed together right now in any of our shelter operations? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You are, yes.
Thanks. Then, one other question. You talked about the catering of meals, when, of course, those used to be provided by the community. And I know a lot of, you know, faith communities would come together. Is that a possibility to reduce costs, to go back to having the meals being provided by the community?
So we've discussed that at some length as we've, as we've worked to develop operating budgets for the, for the new shelter. And it's something that, that Porchlight, the operator, has been wary of. They've noted that the infrastructure that they had used, and many of the, the community groups that they had relied upon have sort of fallen away. And, you know, we, we've sensed more than a little reluctance to try to regenerate that. The, the facility, the new shelter, as it is being designed, comes complete with a commercial kitchen. And, and so there are plans to reduce the cost of, of meals by taking advantage of, of that facility, and by taking advantage of donated food. But not so much going back to volunteer, donated, and preparing and serving meals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jim and Director Kumar. My question is for Jim. And Jim, we've worked closely together, so a lot of this information is no surprise to me. But I'm wondering, because it's, I didn't hear it incorporated in the presentation, what you all are seeing in terms of trends for city-funded providers who are providing, whether it's shelter, permanent housing, rapid rehousing programs? What they are experiencing in terms of being able to provide high-quality costs with rising operation costs, rising staff costs, et cetera, especially as we're seeing the need and the population accessing specifically shelter raise?
So Alder, I would, what I would say to that is that, you know, you know, as well as anybody, that, that this is an area of, of service provision that has chronically operated in a state of resource deprivation. And if, if there was a silver lining to the pandemic, it is that there was a tremendous influx of, of resources to many of these organizations. They've enjoyed the, the benefits of, of a lot more money than they've ever had in the past. I think we've, we've had an opportunity to see the, the quality of services that can be provided when, when they are properly resourced. But we've tried to make as clear as we can that the pandemic and the resulting flow of, of federal funding was an extraordinary event. It, it didn't signal a new normal. And, and so it, it, there is going to be a challenge in sort of resetting what agencies are able to do and how they're, how they're able to do it. We're going to do the, the best that we can to, to maintain the support with the resources that we have. But there's, I think there's no question that many agencies are going to, to need to either find other funding sources or, or to readjust their, their activities, you know, to better match the, the funds that'll be available.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I know that was a hard question. So the follow-up may be solution-focused and especially because I know the city-county homeless issues, we just had a budget listening session this week and there's a lot of interest across the council and our constituents on, I think, homeless and houseless services and operations. And considering the 5% cut across departments, I think I heard something in the ballpark of $800,000 from CDD's budget. Is there anything that you could recommend the council look towards, knowing that many of us are coming from nonprofit but also corporate and the community investment when we are helping those who are most at risk? Is there anything that you all haven't already thought of, encouragement for the council to be thinking of in support of the city having limited resources but the needs growing?
Yeah, Alder Curry, so, so you're right. The, the 5% reduction for the Community Development Division translates to about an $800,000 impact. Here's what I would say about, you all know what the prospects for the city budget is next year and into the future. I think the county budget perhaps has a little bit more flexibility and, and we'll certainly step up our work to coordinate and collaborate with, with Dane County in the hopes that they might be able to, to do more than they have. But, but I think the key, and, and this is particularly true with respect to shelter operations, the key is to engage the private sector. As we visited shelters, both traveled to some and, and spoke to others around the country, it is very, very uncommon to find shelter operations that are supported primarily or in some cases at all with local resources, with, with local tax dollars, public money. For example, we, we were, the Minneapolis and St. Paul facilities that, that we really spent a lot of time in and, and learned a lot from, very little in the way of local dollars supporting those operations. Instead, it comes from the, the private sector. And so, so we need to activate and energize private sector leaders and convince them that this is a community need and, and they need to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris for the second time.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up question to my Alder's question for community engagement, private partnerships. Have we started down that road? Do we have them? What's the, what's our current situation? Thank you for raising that.
Well, we're not as far down that road as, as we would like to be. But yes, Alder, there, there are some conversations that are being had. You know, this is a message that, that we, that the mayor has been sending for, for quite some time, that there's a, a role to play here for the private sector. And, and, and we need to really focus on that part of, of what we're doing with respect to shelter operations. We, we haven't done enough yet.
Thank you, Alder. President Figaro Cole.
Um, Mayor, I, I don't per se have a question. I just had a statement, so I don't know if this is appropriate time for that.
I don't see why not.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go for it. I mean, Jim and I, he, he's probably sick of me having these discussions over and over. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you both for being here and sharing this information with the public. But I just have to, just, just put it out there. I mean, I, you know, when it comes to the, to the reasons of, or the root causes for people experiencing homelessness, I mean, it, it really, it like, like Director O'Keefe mentioned, there's various reasons for that, including like high medical bills or people that don't have insurance or lack of mental resources or simply the lack of privileges, many privileges that many of us enjoy just for existing. So not to mention a pandemic that put, that accelerated processes for other people to be on the streets. So to me, I don't need a chart to tell me what the, I don't, I, I don't think at this point, being on this council for two years, working on this particular issue, I don't need a chart telling me what the root causes are of these problems. What I'm really want to continue to focus is, is on finding the solutions to help people get back on their feet. And like Director O'Keefe just mentioned, the solution is not a council or county solution. The solution is the, for the community and the private sector to roll up the sleeves and to tackle this issue and to really get, take it seriously. Because, I mean, everyone, you never know when you'll be the next person being on the street. So just, this is not something, you don't wake up one day and decide, oh, I'm just gonna go and, and sleep in the park. That just doesn't happen overnight. So there's many different conditions that can bring you here. So I really want to put that message out there that the partnerships of the private sector and the community at large, it's, it is a must for this, for, to make a, to, to make a dent on the issues that we're facing today. And if we don't, if we don't get with that message, this is not, one, it's not gonna go away and two, it's just gonna continue to get worse. And I, I, we are at a point right now where the numbers are not as extreme as other areas in the country. So there's no better time than now to, to, to come together to, to find solutions. And thank you both for your presentations.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox for the second time.
No, I don't believe, did I ask a question on this? But in any case, you know, I don't often go into the, to any philosophical discussions with the council, but I guess you can indulge me this time. And this is a question for you, Jim. Given the amount of financial resources that we put into trying to deal with homelessness issues, and I know in the past, there have been several church groups that have worked on shelters. I think we have one downtown that has been operating for a while. I guess my, my question, you, you posed the issue of it's the business and the broader community to address this issue. I often wondered that we have, I don't know how many faith-based organizations in this town, they have facilities. Every night, these facilities are heated, lighted, closed and empty. So I, I really often wonder, why can't all of the churches come together? There shouldn't be a single night where on any part of town, there are several church groups who could be opening their doors, providing space. Most of them have, you know, restrooms and water and the city could use their resources to provide the programming money to operate those shelters rather than us engaging in facilities, buying facilities, spending money, you know, on facilities. And it just seems to me that the community and including the business community could come together. And here we'd have an opportunity to maybe subsidize some of the utility and water costs to these facilities. But every night, all these facilities are closed and empty and you have people out here who have no place to go and no place to sleep. Why has anyone ever talked about something similar to that to address this problem where we could use the city's resources to provide the programming and use volunteers in facilities that are already existing, heated, you know, overnight and possibly provide some security? Every church could have a map and say, we get one night a month. Is that a crazy idea? But Jim, maybe you can address that.
Alder, not, not crazy at all and, and you're right. There is a place for faith-based organizations and, and they have been instrumental in, in helping address this issue over the years. You might recall that for many years, I think it was the Road Home, actually ran a program much like what you're describing, Alder Knox, in which they would utilize a, a, a number of different churches for, I think it was maybe a week or possibly a month at a time to provide shelter services. I think they were, they were focused on families. There are, you know, there, there are, I think, limitations to what those facilities are, are able to do in terms of, of providing support in, in regard to shelter. There are certainly staffing accommodations and the need for, for training of, of whether it's staff or volunteers. So there are, you know, there may be some opportunities, but I think that there are also some challenges to that. And, and I would note that, that the Road Home got out of that line of work, I think, in, in some part and maybe others know more about this than I do. But because they, they did struggle with, with some of those challenges around the needs of that population and the ability to serve them in a church setting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, definitely for the second time.
I didn't lower my hand, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison for the second time.
Oh, Alder Madison for the first time.
Alder Madison for the first time. Sorry, folks.
Been over here chilling. So I just wanted to, to just lift up what Jim has shared about the Road Home. Also, I wanted to know partially why Road Home got out of it, because they expanded their model to include permanent housing and absolutely brilliant case management. And I mean, brilliant, long-term case management. In order for them to even begin to think about expanding it to serve the current homeless population, we will have to look at increasing or providing some level of funding or helping them find the funding. But I just, I really, I raised my hand because I was going to bring up, Road Home has done that, they succeeded at it, they, they expanded it and they're providing permanent housing and brilliant case management, long-term too.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
For the first time.
For the first time.
I will just kind of, I'd like to address some of it as somebody who works in the faith space and is, knows quite a few faith leaders within the community. Many of our congregations are aging and losing their financial resources consistently so that our faith spaces are also in a bit of a crisis. So to kind of add upon one of the reasons that a lot of our, our faith communities cannot or don't have the capacity to, to help with, so just to shed light on that too. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I've no other Alders in the queue with questions. So let me say thank you to Director O'Keefe and General Manager Kumar for being with us tonight and invite you to share your slides if you'd wish or to send follow-up information on all of the resources discussed to the council so that they can share with their constituents as well. All right. Thank you both.
Thank you, everybody.
So that, before we move on into the rest of our agenda, I just would like to apologize for not catching this earlier, but item 125 had been requested for exclusion. Item 125 is on our agenda tonight for introduction only. So we're not able to exclude it for discussion. I will ask the city attorney if we need to have a vote on introduction at the appropriate time or if we can consider it introduced. You don't have to tell me now, but just wanting to flag that, that we will not be discussing item 125 tonight. So our first item is item three, which is Legisstar 82871, a new license for Refuel Pantry Incorporated at 2702 East Washington Avenue. On this item, let's start with a motion, please. President Figaro Cole.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt. I will note that in addition to having the captain here, we also have, I believe, Assistant City Attorneys Zillavy and McReynolds who can discuss the standards for license approval or rejection. Are there questions for staff on item three? Alder Madison.
Thank you so very much, Mayor. I do want to start with Captain Gary. If you wouldn't mind just sharing what's happening in this immediate area, the calls for service and just your overall general, just a summary of what's happening in this immediate area.
No problem, Alder Madison. How's my volume this time? Any better? Okay, I'll start with the calls for service that at 2702 East Washington Avenue. This data is based on data that was already released to Alder Madison. It's, the timeframe is between the beginning of 2022, January 22 to, to April of 24. So during that time, there were 75 calls for service at the gas station at 2702 East Washington. 21 of those calls were proactive calls. And when I say proactive, that means that officers are initiating those calls themselves, usually to be in the area to prevent uh, initiating those calls themselves, usually to be in the area to prevent any other crime or issues occurring. They're not calls generated by a call to dispatch from the address. So that's fifty-four calls for service, um, and over about a two-year period at the gas station. And the types of calls vary. Um, in twenty-twenty-four, the calls were an alarm, a checked property, annoying phone calls and trespass call. So a variety of calls occurred there. Um, as far as just kind of the general environment in that area. Uh, for those that don't know, I was the captain of the East District for three years up until the beginning of this year. And as Alder Martinez Rutherford can attest to, we addressed quite a few issues at the shopping center across the street from where this gas station is, starting back in twenty-twenty-two. Um, there were drugs being sold out of the New York nails salon. And at that time, two individuals associated with the business were arrested for drug dealing and consequently the shop was closed down and that, uh, ended the drug dealing from that store. As we moved into twenty-twenty-three, we were receiving complaints about constituents at the shopping center. The commercial tenants complaining about various things from public urination to public drinking to just a feeling of not feeling safe at the shopping center. And we convened a meeting on February, uh, fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three with several of the commercial tenants, the owner of the property and other stakeholders from outside of the shopping center and came up with a plan to address the issues at the shopping center. Some of those steps included, as was mentioned previously, uh, closing down vehicular ac- access to the parking lot by closing Pauling with Jersey barriers, increasing the police presence at the shopping center, and then also the owner of the property paid for special duty, which is hiring MPD as security at the shopping center. So in addition to that, we also, uh, encounter issues across the street at twenty-eight oh two East Washington Avenue. There was a, well, there is still is a, a bus stop there. It won't be there after BRT begins, but we deal with disturbances and also public drinking at that location as well. So those are kind of the issues in and around the shopping center in twenty-seven two East Wash.
Uh, thank you, Captain Gary. Can you also just speak to, um, just from like more of a process oriented uh, way about when the library staff has to call the police? How that might look and how, cause in, um, the notes Jane shared earlier, she mentioned that there were twenty-four um, entries with where alcohol was prevalent in twenty-twenty-four already. In twenty-twenty-three, there were a total of twenty, twenty-four. And twenty-twenty-two, there was just thirteen. So they're absolutely escalating. But I just want to understand what is the relationship between MPD and library staff when they have to make those phone calls? Like, how does that look?
Yeah, I guess ultimately that'd be a better question for her. I don't know if they are calling the police every time they log one of those entries into the log that the library is maintaining. But if they had someone that they wanted to remove from the library, then they would typically call non-emergency and we would have an officer respond to contact staff and then remove that person if that was the step that needed to be taken.
Thank you. That's all I have for, uh, Captain Gary, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martinez Rutherford, questions?
Yeah, Captain Gary, uh, thank you so much for sharing that information. Um, I, I guess, do you, does anyone know exactly how many Class A licenses are in that area? No.
I do.
Do you? How many?
Yep, there are. And I put it in my blog post today, but there are three.
I'm sorry, Alder. That's not how we do it.
Oh, my bad, my bad. I'm tired. I'm sleepy, but it's in my blog post.
That's all right. Thank you. Uh, I'm sure that there are staff who can answer that question. And if not, uh, when we're in discussion, Alder Madison can speak to it.
Um, I will wait for discussion then. I, my apologies for taking up this time.
That's okay. Thank you, Alder. Alder, a bit of our questions for staff.
Yes, Captain Gary, um, you mentioned about the calls for service in this area. Um, can you talk about how that compares to other parts of the city? Like, is this a high rate of calls for service? Is this a moderate rate? Is this a low rate? Like, I don't, I don't really know what's quote-unquote normal for calls for service. So, so how do, how do we put this in context with the rest of the city?
So the, the specific data that I mentioned about the number of calls for service, that's specific to the gas station up until April, between twenty-twenty-two and April of twenty-twenty-four. But I don't, in my opinion, it's not a high number of calls for service, fifty-four over two years. Um, but when we are specifically talking about the shopping center, I would say that we are dedicating more resources to that area than other shopping centers across the city.
Thanks. That's what I was trying to get to. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer, questions?
Yes, thank you, Captain, so much. Um, and, um, my question is with the shopping center, just, I, I just want to make sure things that, uh, I'm understanding right. So when we say the shopping center with the library, that address is, um, it's across the street from the gas station. McGee's Chicken, is that what, is that a shopping center too at twenty-seven oh two? What's the address across the street versus, uh, McGee's and the ga- gas station in McGee's is that's what I'm calling it. And then versus twenty-eight oh two East Washington, because I don't think everybody knows how the whole area is laid out.
Yes, I don't know what the address of McGee's is off the top of my head, but the address of New York Nails, the closed salon was twenty-seven oh nine East Washington Avenue. And twenty-eight oh two East Washington Avenue is directly across the street. And that's the Domino's at the intersection of Johnson Street and East Washington Avenue.
Okay, so they're within like a block or two of each other, right? The, the twenty-seven oh two. Just, just, just setting it up so people understand, twenty-seven oh two is across the street if you're driving down on, on the left-hand side. And then the shopping center that you're talking about is across the street with the library.
Yeah, correct. The shopping center includes Burger King at one end on the south end, and then Walgreens on the far north end.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, um, and also, did you have any, um, uh, do you have any, uh, uh, a report on the, uh, business, the new business owners that are proposing to buy it that are applying for the license? Do you have um, any statistics on their business that they own? They own a couple of gas stations in town?
I do not.
That's, okay.
Right. Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, questions?
Yes, um, Mr. The Mayor, I don't know if there's a rep from the Alcohol License Review Commission. Is that more germane for discussion?
Uh, we have several.
I mean, I'm a member.
Assistant, Assistant City Attorneys here. If you wanted to ask them, uh, we also have.
Sure, maybe, um, one of the assistant attorneys.
So why don't you go ahead with your question and we'll see.
I guess I just wanted to, from, from being on the committee. So this, um, license that's being applied for is from a new owner, not someone who's managed this business where all these statistics are coming from? Is that true? That's my question. Hi Amber.
No, Attorney McReynolds.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I can answer that. You're right, Alder Knox. This is a, a new person coming in and proposing to buy the business and that's the person that is, uh, applying for the license.
So he would not have any control or responsibility for any of these service calls that has occurred previously or to current time?
Right. He hasn't started operations yet at the business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Knox. Alder Madison, further questions? Alder Madison, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry about that. Just for a, a different staff member, not Captain Gary.
Go ahead.
All right. So is, um, Attorney Zillavy available?
She is here.
All right, Attorney Zillavy, do you mind just sharing the charge for LRC with the body, please? Oops, and you're muted too, just like me.
Hi. Um, when the ALRC is considering a liquor license application, um, I, I mean, the first thing they want to consider is whether the applicant meets, meets the basic requirements, which are, um, their age, they have to be twenty-one. Their citizenship, which means they have to have lived continuously in the state of Wisconsin for a period of ninety days. And then they also have to have a seller's permit. So they, those are the basic requirements um, right off the bat. After that, the ALRC needs to evaluate the application um, in terms of health, safety and welfare of the community. The things they consider, they can consider are saturation in the area. Um, whether the location will create undesirable problems in the neighborhood. And in that vein, if, if the committee or the council concludes that there have been problems at the application, uh, at the location, um, that the applica- applicant is applying for, and they believe that past problems will continue or worsen, that is a legitimate reason to deny a license. The statute and the case law gives the city broad discretion in deciding whether to grant or deny a license. And basically as long as the denial um, is not arbitrary discriminatory or capricious, the denial is, um, supported by statute and case law.
Uh, thank you. And then just one quick follow-up question. So does a business owner or business person in the city, do they just have a right automatically to a business license? Like, just because you, you know, you're twenty-one, you pass, you know, you take whatever training, does that automatically just give you the right to a, a liquor license?
No, and that's one of the longstanding principles of case law regarding liquor licenses is that the initial issuance of a license is a privilege, not a right. So nobody has a right to a license when they apply.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitivier, questions?
Yes, for the attorneys. Um, my question is around, um, once a liquor license is granted, how frequently is it revoked? And what are the circumstances under which a revocation? What, what are the criteria for, um, that have to be applied to revoke a license?
Well, eh, once, and, once a license is issued, it does become a property right. And in order to take it away, there has to be a full due process hearing. And there are standards in the statute and in our ordinance for, um, determining whether a license should be revoked. And again, that is a discretionary um, decision on the part of the ALRC as to whether they will recommend revocation. Of course, the council can, um, weigh in on that as well, once it comes to the council. But it's much more difficult to revoke a license, once a license has been issued than to make those determinations on the front end and deny a license.
Do we have data on how, how many licenses or what percentage of licenses are revoked in any given year or five-year period?
Um, I have been doing that work for the past, oh, probably almost twenty-five years. And, um, I think maybe I've brought forth ten revocations over that time period.
And about how many licenses are there in the city, roughly?
I want to say around eight hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer.
Uh, just following up on the Alder's question, um, for the ten or so that you've done over your twenty-year period, that would be eight hundred. Um, is it, you know, pretty egregious? I mean, is it something that, you know, they have to, you know, do something pretty egregious to get in front of you to, for a revocation?
Uh, it's run the gamut. Some of the revocations have been a period of years of violations. Um, some have been, they were not open that long, but they had a pattern of conduct that warranted going forward with revocation, even though they were open a short period of time. Uh, it, it really varied.
And just a quick follow-up, um, um, so, so as far as the committee looking at public health, safety, uh, the requirements to get a license, um, did the committee find that under the new ownership, it would be a public health, safety issue? I mean, you said that there were standards that they looked at. Um, I think in the meeting that you said they cannot consider density, um, as some of our colleagues have proposed under their new ordinance that they're writing, that's eight, three, six, six, nine. So I'm just wondering, did this committee, how many times did this committee take up this license? And, uh, you know, what are the different factors that they were considering?
Well, actually, density is one of the considerations for denial. That is the ground for denial. And something that is contrary to the health, safety and welfare of the community, the density of licensing in an area. And are you, are you talking about, um, for this license specifically, what did they consider?
Yeah, I was at the meeting and you were saying something that, uh, you know, they had wanted, some of the, some of my colleagues had wanted to take up the eight, three, six, six, nine, which is alcohol density ordinance change, uh, that, uh, Alder Madison and, um, um, Vitivier were proposing. And I thought somebody, I thought either you or one of your colleagues in your office said, uh, we couldn't take up that issue right now. We couldn't take up the density and apply it to them. So I just, I'm trying to get at when it can be applied. Um, and then what did they consider when they considered this application? And I'm also interested in knowing how many times they considered the application, the committee, what was their finding?
The, the density can always be considered. I think the discussion at the ALRC was whether that ordinance amendment could be applied to any of the applications that were before the committee on that night. And since the ordinance has not yet been adopted, it can't be applied to any applications that are before the ALRC until it's adopted.
Attorney McReynolds, did you want to add something?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for Alder Latimer Burris, um, basically what Attorney Zillavy, Zillavy said, um, that it can be, um, density can be considered at any time. And the ALRC doesn't need to make a specific finding. So they made a recommendation to the council. Um, but they don't need to make a specific finding or, um, you know, put something in writing about the health, safety and welfare of this particular, um, license. What they do need to do, and what I believe they did, was listen to, um, you know, all of the information and, um, then make a decision that's not arbitrary based on the information that they heard. And that's also the standard for the council making their decision. Um, one thing I also wanted to point out is that, um, because Alder Knox had asked me about this specific owner and applicant, um, the standard is about the health, safety and welfare for the community as a whole, or, you know, in that neighborhood. It's not related to the specific applicant. So, um, you know, we could have an ideal applicant who has, you know, there's nothing wrong. They've done a great job everywhere else. But if the, the council decides that it's not an appropriate location for that license, um, we can't consider the ALRC or the council cannot consider the applicant or the applicant's welfare or economic, um, you know, interest in making the decision whether to grant a license. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Alder Field, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, uh, a more specific version of what I think the previous Alder's question was about. Um, I'm wondering if either of the attorneys or perhaps Jim Verbic could speak to the part of the discussion about this item at the ALRC meeting on Wednesday. the part of the discussion about this item at the ALRC meeting on Wednesday. And whether the ALRC did discuss and deliberate on this question of density of alcohol licenses on this part of East Washington Avenue.
Attorney McReynolds, do you want to take that one?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think others on the committee could chime in and, um, Jennifer Zillaby could chime in if I'm wrong on this. They did talk about it generally, but there wasn't, um, a lot of discussion about the, the density. Um, I think they talked about, you know, specifically a liquor store, um, probably on the same block and down the street, but I don't think there was like a a very robust discussion about density, in my opinion.
Okay, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox?
Thank you. Follow up to what the attorney just said, you know, the, the committee always takes all of those factors in consideration when we're making that decision. Um, so, but I guess my question for staff is this. Uh, maybe Zillaby, maybe it's for you, um, taking what you said, so an applicant does have a right to apply for a license, do they not?
Yes.
Okay, and, and, and doing that, they're probably obviously trying to secure a property right, correct?
Well, they're trying to obtain a license.
So if they get one, they'll have a property right according to what you said, correct? So, wouldn't you say that the only really restrictions that they have to meet would be if they didn't meet the first thing you talked about, filling out the application, making sure that's accurate in the second part, uh, in terms of that is not, you know, fundamentally unsafe for the community, that applicant? Or are you just saying it doesn't have anything to do with the applicant, just the facility, um, that they're applying for the license for?
Well, obviously.
Thank you. Go ahead and elaborate.
Obviously, there are situations in which the applicant themselves may be at issue if they have a felony conviction, if they are a habitual law violator. And those situations, that would definitely come into play. But in terms of if they meet the basic requirements, there still is the overall analysis and evaluation of the business, the impact it will have on the neighborhood. Um, good or bad. The, whether there's an over-concentration of establishments in the area. Let's see, what else? The appropriateness of the location to the license being applied for. And any other reasonable factors that, um, could impact the health, safety and welfare of the community.
I got it. Um, so are there, so what, do we have a standard for what could be considered an over-concentration of of, of those licenses? Um, for example, I used to, um, be the order of a district on Regent Street. And I'm pretty sure there's quite a few of those licenses on Regent Street that, that are right, uh, behind the neighborhood. So what's the standard? Is there a number or a proximity? Uh, what is the standard?
Well, at this point, we don't have a specific number. In the past, discussions have have, um, centered on how many are in the general area. The area itself, whether it's a neighborhood, whether it's a commercial area. But at this point, there is no specific number.
So, so isn't it true that oftentimes what we might do is apply some conditional standards to that permit? To safeguard that community, you know, to ensure that they have those, um, safeguards, uh, in place?
Well, the ALRC frequently applies conditions to, uh, limits harm. I guess is a good way of saying it.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask for, uh, clarification. Cause I was writing, kind of writing pretty slow when, uh, Attorney McReynolds shared that, um, the ALRC is to consider the health, it's about the health, health and safety of the community, not the health and safety or whatever of the applicant. Do you mind just repeating that, that beginning portion of your statement? Sorry.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so the, the standard would be the, um, health and safety and welfare of the community, um, not thinking about like, you know, if we don't grant this license, this person won't have a better business, for example. We're not supposed to think about the applicant in that way. Um, like Jen, um, Attorney Zillaby said, we can think about the applicant or the, the applicant, um, if there's a disqualifying factor. But just because the person qualifies, for example, is not a felon and is twenty-one, that doesn't mean they're automatically granted a license. If that were the case, there wouldn't be an ALRC. Then, you know, we would just that someone would just apply and if it was automatic, it could, you know, be approved by the clerk's office or something. So the ALRC's job is to look at each application on its own and figure out, um, their recommendation.
Uh, thank you for clarifying that for me. Um, I don't have any more questions for the attorneys, but I do have a question for the clerk, I believe it may be for. Is that okay to ask now? Would you like me to keep up with you, Mayor?
Uh, let's see, Alder Latimer-Burris, is it a question for the attorneys? Yes, okay, so, uh, Alder Madison, I'll come right back to you.
Yeah, I'm gonna just get here. Uh, do, do you know, or can you, uh, talk about if, um, the committee considered testimony either in the previous previous, uh, you know, when they were before the committee before, during common counsel and again, uh, again, when they came back to the committee after having a, a full-blown public hearing. Um, do, do you know if they considered what the community, how the community felt about it from the beginning, middle and end? Um, and do you know, do you know if, um, they considered what the applicant had said? Um, that they were going to do for improvements around the drugs, prostitution, alcoholism, drunkenness, intoxication, cleaning up of the place that's trashy, um, you know, the disorders, disarray. Um, do you know if they considered that at all? Were they presented with any evidence there from either the owner or from the community weighing in about it?
Uh, Attorney McReynolds, you can just jump in.
Okay, thanks. Um, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, we can't go into the minds of what the ALRC, um, members were thinking. But, um, they did hear some of the things that you mentioned. Um, like I said, they don't have to make a finding on the record. And, you know, every time they vote, they don't have to explain their vote. Um, some might. Um, but that was not something that was explicitly, um, said. You know, I'm voting for this because I heard this, this and this. That's not really how, um, it's not required and it's not what happened.
Right. Alder, a follow-up?
I just wanted to, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, just gotta be able to get to the mute button. Give me a second. I just want to just have the attorney state if that was, did they talk about these, were these questions asked? Um, about all these different issues that are some pertinent to the business and really the majority of it is to the neighborhood in itself and what they were gonna do, what they intended to do about, about that. I just wanted to, to make sure that the uh, you know, it was highlighted or not highlighted, if that was spoken about at all, those things were considered. Or they were heard at least, presented. I hope you're following me on that.
I think I am. And yes, the things that you mentioned were, um, talked about and heard by the ALRC and some of them are part of the, um, the Legisdar record as well.
Right, thank you, Alder. Alder Madison, questions for the clerk?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask two questions, whether or not there were any conditions placed on this, um, license and I do have a list of alcohol licenses in the area, but I'm wondering if you could share class A and class B licenses in that area within like a point five, uh, within a half-mile range.
Yeah, uh, so the, the ALRC and the meeting last week had recommended four conditions. Uh, this, one, number one, the establishment shall not sell, dispense or give away fermented malt beverages in the original container in amounts less than the amount contained in a six-pack of twelve-ounce bottles or cans. This is only applicable to fermented malt beverages which fall into the following categories of brands. Domestic premium, domestic sub-premium, which includes value and economy brands. Malt liquor and similarly situated imported brands. Number two, flavored malt beverages containing up to six percent alcohol by volume may not be sold, dispensed or given away in the original containers in amounts less than a four-pack of twelve-ounce bottles or cans. Flavored malt beverages containing over six percent alcohol by volume may not be sold, dispensed or given away in the original container in amounts less than a six-pack of twelve-ounce bottles or cans. Number three, the establishment shall not sell, dispense or give away flavor, or I'm sorry, flavored fortified wines in the original container with an alcohol content of more than twelve-point-five percent alcohol by volume, where spirits have been added to the wine that have not been produced from the same fruit as the wine for consumption off the license premises. The prohibition shall not apply to any other wine product as defined by Wisconsin State statutes, one-twenty-five-point-oh-two, para-twenty-two. And lastly, condition number four, class A liquor license limited to sales of wine only. And that last one is related to the ordinance that prohibits, uh, establishments that sell motor fuel from selling intoxicated liquor. And then the question about, um, just, uh, locations in a half-mile range. I don't have a specific measuring tool to, to say, uh, exactly what a half-mile is. Um, but I will say there's, uh, just in the immediate area, there's uh, Trixie's Liquors a little farther northeast on East Wash, Rocky's Liquors a little closer up northeast, uh, on East Wash. I think that's the class As in, in that immediate area. There are a few class Bs, um. The Malt House is right on the corner of Milwaukee and East Wash. Uh, if you go up North Streets, uh, Christine's Sandwiches is right there and not too far from them is Dexter's Pub. And then, let's see, if you go a little farther, uh, southwest of East Wash, there's the Burr Oak. Is not too far from there, Woody and Anne's. Uh, just off of, uh, Wabisa, uh, south of where we're talking about is the Goodman Beauty Center holds an alcohol license. Uh, they told two, actually. And then there's a handful, there's like a three on Commercial Avenue. Uh, there's the Tip Top Tavern, uh, North Street Cabaret. And, uh, Deon's, which is a class A, uh, on Commercial Avenue just by, uh, uh, Aberg, or not Aberg, uh, one, 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 one-three.
Thank you. I do just wanna, since you've mentioned these, like, I do wanna just clarify the distance. Trixie's Liquor is point two miles, you know, two blocks. Roxy's is three-hundred-and-forty-eight feet away. Refuel Pantry is, uh, three blocks away at thirty-nineteen East Wash. And then at least, I'm not sure, I didn't count with you, but I did count ten or eleven in my searches with staff. Thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you, Alder. Additional questions? Alder Latimer-Burris?
Yeah, so I mean, I think if we're gonna make a fair comparative, I'd be interested to know the same distances like on areas like Willie Street, I'd be interested. Actually, I'd be interested to know each and every neighborhood. Uh, of course, that's not possible tonight. Um, but, uh, you know, cause some of those that you were talking about are restaurants or like a coffee house that, uh, you know, you could even take North Avenue. I mean, you know, North Avenue has, you know, I could, you know, they serve liquor, like there's one. You know, there's a restaurant right across the street is like beer right across the street from that is, you know, a tavern. So I think we, we gotta be careful of, um, careful of that. I don't think that you would have those numbers, but it'd be interesting to see. If you could compare it to Willie Street, Regent Street, the South Side, all sorts of places. I, I, I can, I can ask if, I don't think that you'll be able to produce that, uh, and that question is for the clerk. You, would you be able to produce that or off the top of your head? Is that something that you could weigh in on?
I can give a general estimate maybe, and if you give me like a couple minutes, I can, I can do some counting. You said, I'm sorry, Willie Street and Regent Street and what was the other one?
The South Side.
Yeah, if you took the, the block on the South Side, so if you took like Park Street, uh, you know, on the South Side and went up Park Street. You know, in a half-mile radius.
Alder Madison?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. My questions are for library staff, so I'm not sure if it's okay to ask those now.
Why don't you go ahead because the clerk's gonna need a minute.
Okay, thank you. Um, I do just wanna ask, uh, the, the library director to just share, um, I know Jane earlier shared some incidents, I think there were twenty-four, all of last year, twenty-four to date this year, but, um, if you can share just the extended notes that you shared with me over email, so this body has those. Um, I, I also just, I'm sure this is not the appropriate place, but Isaac and Common Council Office will help any of us do any research on data, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, the numbers that I shared with you, uh, were we had twenty-three incidents where, um, either police were called or customers or visitors were banned in twenty-four so far, and three of those involved alcohol. In, um, twenty-three, we had forty-two incidents of note and six of those involved alcohol. And then the numbers that Jane had mentioned, uh, when she spoke earlier. In twenty-four, um, so far, we've had twenty-four entries in our behavior log that, um, directly involved alcohol, including, um, bottles found in the library. Um, customers coming in, you know, obviously intoxicated. Um, not all of those required banning because oftentimes when you ask a customer to leave, um, and they, and they smell like alcohol and they're behaving inappropriately, inappropriately in the library, they just leave and that's the end of it. Um, so in twenty-four, we had twenty-four entries in our log so far this year. In twenty-three, we had twenty-four entries, um, again, related to alcohol. And in twenty-two, we had thirteen entries. So we've definitely seen an increase in, um, behavior, you know, around alcohol in the library. Does that fully answer your question?
It does. And then can you just, um, earlier in Alder post, just ask some questions about security? Are, can you just tell me, are yours, um, the library security, like, are they off-duty officers? What's their level of, you know, training, I guess, for securing, for security?
They are not off-duty officers. Um, they are, uh, you know, hourly staff that we have put through some training. Um, and part of the work that they do is really engaging with customers, um, in, in just kind of a, a different level than what our library staff are able to do. Um, Jane, if you're still on and, and want to share more about the actual training of our security monitors, feel free to jump in.
Jane, you can go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Uh, yeah, they get, they do train with, um, our security coordinator at the Central Library where they shadow at the Central Library. They get some de-escalation training. Um, and some, uh, other online training from, uh, somebody who works with homeless and unhoused in Chicago. They are not in a uniform, they don't wear. They are not in a uniform, they don't wear any kind of badge. We try to keep it as low-key as possible so that um, it's more of a customer-focused uh interaction in the hopes. Uh, sometimes it does rise to the level where we have to ask somebody to leave. But there, the hope is that they're walking around and catching things uh before they get too uh extreme. So, yeah, not off-duty officers. They wear a lanyard. That's kind of their only identifier as as security, quote unquote.
Thank you. And is there a reason that they are not working outside and just in the, inside the library?
We do that for their safety, um, because they'd be alone outside and because they are not armed police officers or security. Um, I I I've been doing library security for a very long time and it's always been our rule that you don't go out of sight of other staff. Sometimes they might step outside to ask somebody to, if people are drinking right in front of the door. A library staff person, any of us might do that. It might not just be the security person. But we always try to have backup. I don't want them going too far from the doors or anywhere where we can't see them because it's not secure.
Thank you, thank.
I would also say like, once they're off library property, they can't, you know, they are enforcing the library's behavior policy, which doesn't apply once you're off library property. So, you know, once you basically get off off of the sidewalk, you you're into not library property.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you. Uh, Alder Latimer-Barris, do you have additional questions or are you waiting for the clerk?
Oh, no, I was wanting to ask the staff, library staff. Um, first, I just wanna say thank you that you guys, um, and I've talked um with um you about this, uh, you know, the libraries have become a, uh, you know, deposit for all sorts of um, you know, extended circumstances, uh, having to deal with, you know, people that are intoxicated, people that are unhoused, people that need services, um, you know, people that need sitter services. I mean, if across the board, we should be supporting, not cutting the libraries. Uh, and you guys have a superhuman task because you're dealing with, um, you know, uh, frankly, some of the people that other uh people do not care to deal with, but nonetheless, they come in and you and you take care of them to the best of your abilities, so we appreciate that. I'm wondering is, um, your just opinion is, uh, some of these things, you know, the drugs, the doc prostitution, alcoholism, drunkenness, intoxication, clean up the trashy area, the disorder, you know, the nail place next door that was drug dealing. I mean, are those because there's liquor there? Um, is it because of the population feels safe going to the um library? Um, I, you guys have a gargantuan task, so can you just, can we put that into context if you feel like it's driven by people being able to have access to alcohol, which they do around the entire city and there's libraries, you know, around the entire city. I wonder if it's just specific to this library, I guess is what I'm asking.
Um, that's a big question. I'll try to answer it as best I can. I, you know, I I think what I can speak to, um, and Jane can jump in as well. What we, what we can speak to is that we have seen an increase in the number of incidents in this particular library. Um, I haven't pulled data on all of the other libraries recently, so um, you know, I know that we are are definitely seeing an increase in behavior in some areas of the city and our libraries over others. Um, Hawthorne is definitely seen an increase in the last few years. And I believe there are a variety of factors um surrounding that. Alcohol is one of them. Um, I I think there are some other factors um that are um police representatives spoke about as well. Um, I'm I'm not sure I can really answer all the rest of the questions, you know, just do all those things happen in the neighborhood because there's alcohol there that's kind of out of my purview. Jane, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yeah, I would agree that it would be hard to pinpoint one particular thing as the thing. I do think it's partly the location, the mall property in my tenures has always had some struggles. But it's gotten uh more so in the last few years uh for a lot of the reasons you mentioned. I do think we're um, I do keep an eye as a per- part of the security team at the library, I do keep an eye on what's going on at all our locations, and I would say Hawthorne is more of a hotspot than most of our other libraries in general.
Alder Latimer-Barris, anything additional?
Yeah, and just following up on that hotspot because I know, and I I know, I mean, I know that everybody, you know, the captain knows about it, I know about it, you guys know about it. The hotspot is like all around in this section of people hanging out. Do you think that has anything? Cause it's a, you know, within the neighborhood, is there some re-entry services and okay, just go down into this, but we we don't need to go into this today. Uh, but do, does that add all into it? I'm just wondering, um, it's a hotspot all around because this neighborhood. Would you agree with that? Because this neighborhood absorbs a lot.
Yes, I'd say yes, I agree with that. I do think part of the function of the library as sort of a safe space for the community um can it, it, people want to come to the library from across the range of demographics and economic status. And because we're that safe space, it um it just, I think that's part of it as well um for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I believe the clerk may have an answer for you at this point in time.
Yeah, I just looked at uh at at those streets and and kinda saw what's along those streets in the uh about a half mile. Uh, Willie Street, I saw about sixteen establishments. Regent's about twelve, Parks about eleven. I also looked at Atwood, which is pretty close. They had about seventeen. Uh, just sort of looking at those stretches of road and any sort of establishments that were within a block of of those streets.
Thank you. Alder Madison, I'll just comment, we've had a number of round of questions for a number of staff at this point in time, and it feels like we are perhaps straying a little far from the question of the license, so if we could try and be.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll, I'll hold it for a discussion then, don't worry.
Thank you, Alder Madison. I have no other Alders in the queue wishing to ask questions of staff. The item before us is item number three. The motion is to grant the license. Is there discussion? Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
Yes, as somebody who represents the neighboring district um, and has worked in that shopping center across the street, knowing that there are several uh locations where people can buy liquor in the area and the concerns that that center specifically has had and the concerns of my constituents in that area that experienced that, I am opposed to approving this, especially and and um, there's another license under that specific owner, just literally across the street and a block and a half down. Um, I've, I'm so grateful for all the work that um Captain Gary uh and I uh did helped with uh before I was elected and since I've been elected and and we miss you over here. Um, although we're in good hands. Um, I I'm not supportive of this at all and and uh I would really like us to consider not approving it. There are not, uh, you know, not only is there um, the library where children come to access, you know, services to wait for their parents when they get off to get education. Um, there are people trying to access um uh public health there. There are people who are trying to access businesses and business owners that are that have to deal with this uh with a lot of um unacceptable, acceptable behavior in the area, even bleeding over to the the neighbors behind the building. Um, the measures that the police have done and the measures that the property owner across the street that has done for that center um has been wonderful and they've been incredible to work with, but there's still a lot of of struggles. Also, knowing that there are a lot of people who are dropped off near or, you know, that are accessing shelter and still wanna be safe and not preyed upon by people trying to get them drunk or giving them drugs in the area would uh be nice to have and knowing that there is a incarcerated facility very close. Um, there are a lot of different concerns than anywhere else in the city that has density of this nature. Um, so that is my perspective and I I'm I'm not supportive of the approval of this license. So, that's my, that's my two cents for what it's worth.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vinnever?
So, I appreciate Alder Knox um previously asking the question about what global um perspectives we have put forward on alcohol density, and the answer is there aren't any yet outside of um the alcohol um overlay in the downtown area. Um, and I sincerely hope that we will approach this issue with um attention as it comes before us in the coming, um, hopefully several weeks. Um, but I wanna give some background, um, again, as a public health professional to talk about what alcohol dense, higher alcohol density in general does. It contributes to higher rates of youth drinking. It increases assaults, street violence, domestic and intimate partner violence, motor vehicle crashes, and other forms of injury. A twenty nineteen report from the City of Madison shows that areas with greater alcohol density have higher numbers of police calls and more need for building inspection services, raising costs for both agencies. In general, we have a higher density of alcohol outlets in areas of this city with higher social vulnerability. So we have uh an over-targeting of folks who are already vulnerable. Um, in my personal uh professional capacity, I served as the primary editor for Wisconsin's most recent state health assessment for my employer, Wisconsin Division of Public Health, and this is not my background. Um, so I learned a lot in doing that activity. Um, Wisconsin leads the country in binge drinking. One in four adults in Dane County have reported binge drinking in the past thirty days. And fatal injuries from alcohol use are increasing over time. In Dane County alone, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two, drunk driving crashes increased from thirty-seven to eighty. That is more than a doubling in that time period, and that should concern all of us. As we've heard tonight, our role is in protecting the health, welfare, and safety of our populace. That is what is before us. I also wanna be able to talk about those questions that are at the top of our agenda. Who benefits, who is burdened, who does not have a voice at the table, and how can policymakers mitigate unintended consequences? It is cl- clear that the benefit of granting this alcohol license is to the business. As we've heard, it gives them a business right, not exactly in perpetuity, but essentially in perpetuity until there's something egregious enough to take that license away. Um, and certainly the business owner would argue that the other benefits are the people who frequent the business um with ease of use. It's three hundred and forty-eight feet to the nearest liquor store. That's not very far for someone to go if they really wanna buy other liquor. Who's burdened is also been ma- made very, very clear tonight. It is our residents, it is the people who frequent our library, our public health department, the folks who frequent the shops in the mall across the street. We've heard in previous times at this council about people in the neighborhood who have complained about what has happened at this business location. And again, new ownership, super excited for it, they're gonna clean things up, great, wonderful, fantastic. That does not mean that there are not still concerns of the residents who live right around that area and already have two liquor stores very close to them. Um, so we have people who come to us regularly asking, even begging for relief from the density of alcohol licenses due to the impact on the enjoyment of their communities. And really, it is incumbent upon us to listen to those folks. The unintended consequences of not granting this license are few. So I'll leave it there and thank you all and um vote your conscience. I will vote against this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox.
Wow, I didn't know we were advocating for prohibition here. But anyway, um, I'm gonna support this as a as the fellow people on the Alcohol Review Commission. Um, number one, I did hear the police say that he did not feel like it was a high number of calls during that time period. We also um um, provided some conditions on the permit to try to mitigate some of those potential issues that the neighborhood um may have. The applicant has experience in operating a business like this too. Um, and he took the time to meet the request, to meet with the residents additionally, and that's why it got referred back, and he he did that. Um, you know, um, he did what he was asked to do in that case, and I just think um, giving the applicant an opportunity to show his goodwill towards that community um with his business. Um, a little aside, you know, with the library, um you know, the library is a place, it's one of the few public places where people can go. And yeah, some people go, they might have, you know, might not be in the best state of mind when they go there, but that's the reason we have our public library, so people will have a place to go, a indoor space to go. And we encourage that in our libraries. Um, so, you know, I'm gonna support this. I think we really need to think hard about, um I mean, even this city has increased uh parks where people are allowed to go and have alcohol in. So I mean, it's kinda like we increased this opportunity for people to enjoy themselves and that, and then now we come back with the backlash on these same citizens for indulging in those things that we've given them the opportunity to do. So, I'm gonna support this applicant, and until we can be fair across the board. I mean, let's be honest, um, businesses, mostly businesses apply for alcohol licenses to expand their business. And we all know that. Sometimes there's nonprofits that do it for events, but by and far it's applicants who are trying to make a, you know, make a profit and make it convenient for their customers. I mean, we, 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 we have people going to grocery stores buying alcohol. Really? Are we gonna put some limits on that too? I think we need to be reasonable here, and yeah, there are people who have alcohol problems. There are people who have all kinds of problems. I personally don't even drink, but I don't think that I should be imposing my standards on other people. And I'm very, very, everybody knows here, I'm very, very sensitive to communities, making sure that they're safe. I hundred percent of the time always weigh in on what the residents feel that is affecting their quality of life. But on this, I'm gonna um, I'm gonna uh vote to support this.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Curry?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I felt the need to speak about this item just to share transparently my own discomfort with, I think, the conversation we've had tonight. I think it's necessary and robust. But to me, the issue at hand or the narrative um and the issues that have been highlighted to me are not about the license itself, but speaking to broader issues that um I myself am part of this body and recall conversations, what many more conversations than any other time during my term about ALRC, about liquor licenses and about their responsibilities and charge. And so that stands to make me believe that there's some opportunities and possibly uh urgent need for policy change and revisions at current standards or the way we look at how we allocate liquor licenses. But with that being said, um, I But with that being said, um, I understand the issue that uh specifically, I know Alder Madison has tried to bring to our attention. Um, through blogs and by bringing um the police and and the library staff to us tonight, which I appreciate. Um, but what is of most discomfort to me is is how we're not talking about the area and how the area um has demonstrated. Pervasive gaps in access and opportunity. We've talked about people's use of alcohol, possibly other substances in the area. I don't know if anyone mentioned the close proximity of Sandberg Elementary School, East High School down the streets, shopping malls that we all frequent. Um, and so it also brings me as an east side alder, I. I'm not one to make the divisions of east side, north side, west side, south side is best, of course, I'm biased, but it. Calls my attention again to where we're talking about development of affordable housing. We're talking about development of homeless shelters and services that provide basic needs. And if we're already talking about disenfranchised populations and neighborhoods, gaps in access and opportunity. We also need to call attention to racial disparities. We need to call attention to the folks that are getting police calls because they're experiencing a crisis or. A way where their behavior is not meeting community expectations. To me, I'd I'd love to see the breakdown, we don't have time of all of that, but it calls my attention to all other root causes that aren't part of this narrative today. So I just wanted to speak, I'm not sure honestly where I fall on this, I feel like. A hypocrite by denying this, um, knowing that we have other high concentrations. Of alcohol licenses and people who are frequently, frequencing, frequenting businesses in an inebriated state. Um, but I'm conflicted and I wanted to share that and my reasons for it and also appreciate the conversation that has been had tonight about the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Romo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, thank you, Alder Curry, that was really helpful um and. Kind of I share some of your conflicting feelings, I, when someone, when, when so, when. Alder Lammer Burris asked how many licenses were in like various neighborhoods, I went to the clerk's page. Now, of course, my district has changed, so the number, I used to do this count all the time and other than maybe District Four. I do think District Six has some of the most licenses in the city of Madison. And while I did notice some were like being held, I counted eighty-three Class B licenses in District Six. And I counted nine Class A licenses, which include um liquor stores. Um, Willie Street Co-op, another grocery store, Festival Foods. And as well as, you know, uh, several liquor stores, so. I um just wanted to share with you an anecdote from my past as alder. I I don't know really exactly what you'll take from it, but um there was a stop and go at Shank's Corners and. Quick Trip bought it and at some point, I was like, wow, there's another Quick Trip on Third Street. Uh, how many, like, how many licenses do we need in if, in this little area? And they already had a license, but here's a change, right, from a different, a di- different business. And 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 so the council went along with my request to not grant the license, which did actually shock me, but that's what happened. And guess what happened? Quick Trip sold the location and now it's housing. So I'm not suggesting that will be the outcome, but if you don't grant the license, what will happen with the current owner? Will they continue? Will they continue at, you know, in the poor maintenance apparently that we, you know, and I didn't hear directly, I didn't listen to ALRC. But I, you know, sort of anecdotally aware that neighbors were concerned about the the care of the property of the current applicant. So it just raises the question that I've thought about a lot in my tenure. It's various types of businesses rely on alcohol as part of their business model, so. The obvious one are every restaurant, everyone says, oh, your neighborhood's so cool, all these restaurants, almost every single one has a Class B license. And you know, granted, you're not going there, coming out necessarily tipsy, you're just having a couple of drinks maybe with dinner with your friends or family, whatever. But then pretty much every gas station wants to have one and this is what we're seeing. And every, definitely every convenience store wants one, they're part of the business model is related to alcohol. And when Quick Trip couldn't have alcohol, they said it's, they're not going to supply us with little groceries and carry out coffee and anything else they might have served. They just said no, because they needed the alcohol to survive. So that's where I get sympathetic with the, you know, the, you know, the side thing that's been delayed with the density thing. And I think we really need to look at that because I do think there are public health issues. And and then I guess the question comes down to when Attorney McReynolds says, well, don't be arbitrary. And that's, I think, what we really need to think about, like, okay, we know there's a hotspot across the street, that used to be my district. I know all about like people dealing drugs in the parking lot and alcohol and all that stuff. Um, and but is it like this particular entity that's going to make it worse? I I don't know that we could say that yet, um, you know, and then the other thing is like at some point this refuel, they do this. And arguably, they're going to be a better applicant than the one that exists. Anyway, so these are just things I'm circling in my brain as a policymaker. I sort of tend to think I could support it, but then the alder has asked us to to grant it and neighbors came, at least some neighbors came to LRC. Said they're willing to give the applicant a try, so you know, I'm trying to weigh these factors. So with that, I will just um stop and we'll see how this goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris.
Yeah, so I I too was fifty fifty, I don't even drink beer, so I don't even like beer, so it has no impact on me. The impact of, that it does have on me is that because this is a hotspot. Drugs, alcohol, prostitution, I'm talking about trash, all of the things, uh, you know, people tend to avoid it. Uh, you know, the neighborhood avoids that particular gas station, don't stop for gas, there's not a whole lot of places to get gas when you're going down the street. Uh, including myself, I tend to avoid it because I don't want to be caught up in chaos. Now, the neighborhood did weigh in, we had initial uh meeting, uh, uh. So we're not satisfied with the noticing, so we had an additional meeting and actually I worked with the common council office to make sure that it was very. Intensive that we, who we've reached out to, uh, and the new applicant, uh, you know, kind of brokered. Just talking to the neighborhood, you know, hitting all the neighborhood associations, talking to them, so when Nick came and earlier spoke. You know, his partner Julia, uh, who does run the Emerson E- Ekin, uh, Neighborhood Association, they heard about it, they supported. So there must be a conflict in their own house about what's supported, what's not. Um, the neighborhood that was talking, the neighborhood um person that came that was directly behind and has witnessed the trash, the prostitution. All of that wants the place cleaned up. We talked in detail, the the owner talked in detail, it's not, you know, it's a six pack of beer, it's not. Tilting the whole neighborhood, what is tilting the whole neighborhood is all the activity that's going on. And so now the neighborhood just avoids it, so they reversed course after talking to the owner directly. Looking at things, getting more input from the neighborhood, uh, and I, I just gave. A summary of what I heard and what I heard when we had our neighborhood meetings where people came. And at the two alcohol licensing review committees where people came and the letters that people sent in. Is that seventy percent were either neutral or, okay, we'll try it. And then there was about thirty percent that were just under no circumstances should there be any, any. Uh, license granted for anything. Um, and so I think it's fair enough not to make this a test neighborhood for a greater issue that. I believe that uh the Alders, Madison and um Beniver are bringing up with their uh alcohol density issue. Um, I think that we, I agree with my colleague, uh, Alder Curry, that we do have a bigger issue and it. And 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 there's multiple things going on in in the neighborhood and yet people are willing to try, the neighborhood absolutely weighed in. Uh, you know, we went out far, we went deep and we asked, we asked the applicant. What would you do in this situation? What would you do in that? Wh- we're, we went to visit their other businesses that they have turned around. And the neighborhood s- said, let's try it, the neighborhood has said, let's try it. And if it does not work out, they will definitely get together and oppose it a hundred percent. They want to be able to get gas to go and stop by, maybe even pick up a six pack if they drink beer, I don't drink beer, so I wouldn't be picking up a six pack. Uh, and we do have to address the bigger issues and of uh, you know, impact. And it's complicated and we always want to narrow it down to diversity, equity, inclusion, black and brown people and we gotta just help and do all this stuff and ah. It's like, if you've been through it, if you've really been through it, you've been on the surface, you've had people incarcerated, if you know dealing with. Uh, you know, people coming out that have addictions, then you know it's not because there's just this place sell beer, sells beer and that's why. We have this problem. As a matter of fact, I thought it was very interesting in closing. That the other neighborhoods like Atwood and Willie Street and Regent, they're all in the, they're all in like seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, we're down in the tens. We tried prohibition, it didn't work back in the twenties. Not saying that this proposed future, you know, ordinance that we're going to look out for is good or bad. I'm saying if we're going to address it, we gotta address it across the boatboard. As a matter of fact, we need to address why we have our libraries acting as. Mental health facilities and taking care of people to the degree where they put their own life at risk. So the neighborhood weighed weighed in and some of the people that were in opposition have written letters on the record that they totally reversed the decision. So I have to follow what the neighborhood says, um, and uh not what my personal beliefs are about drinking or this particular station.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Brevier.
Thank you, Mayor. I I wish to uh share some of my thoughts as one of the three council representatives on the ALRC along with. Uh, Alders Knox and Meadzy. So some of the um. Questions and answers dur- of staff uh as part of this discussion, I don't think were completely. Um, accurate in full, so I wanted to just start there with your permission, Mayor, and perhaps speak a little more broadly. About the ALRC because the reality is is that every single action of the ALRC is advisory to the common council. And yet, in about twenty years that I've served on the ALRC. I would estimate that ninety-nine percent of our actions are ratified without any discussion by the council. I would like to think that that's because we do a pretty decent job. Uh, that we follow um the input that we're given by stakeholders. Very importantly, the alder of the district and the commander of the Madison Police Department District. Where a particular um applicant is located. So, a couple of things I I just wanted to add to the discussion with staff earlier are as follows. First, there seemed to me a little impression. That perhaps the ALRC doesn't take our job seriously. I can't tell you uh that, that I find that perhaps premise that might have been left during the Q and A. Uh, to be um in any way, shape or form accurate. So for example, when the office of the city attorney was asked. Oh, was density discussed in the meeting, uh, how many? Cases uh of discipline does the committee engage in? Those sorts of questions I think are excellent, wholly appropriate. And perhaps we should have a long overdue presentation on alcohol licensing. Uh, at the start of a council meeting as we've started this tradition of presentations. Um, but the reality is, is that when you have a problematic establishment, there are other routes to go. Besides rushing right to revocation of a license and that wasn't mentioned earlier. So for example, when there is a establishment that is wholly out of control. There are two immediate options that that are available, one is utilizing a so-called police chief's security plan. And another is um litigation in circuit court in terms of nuisance law. And. I would like to share the example of Lush Lounge, where we had a tragic homicide last year and. That establishment quickly realized that they should go out of business, they were no, they they shouldn't have been in business in the first place. Uh, and violated all sorts of conditions that were on their license and representations made to our committee. That wasn't a revocation, that was, that happened much more quickly than a revocation shuttering that business. There are many examples like that during my tenure in City Hall where landlords are involved, begin eviction processes. Uh, certainly we have progressive discipline through a demerit system in our Madison general ordinances. There are prosecutions by the city attorney's office and municipal court of licensed establishments, suspensions are another option. So I just wanted to elaborate further on that one. As it relates to what's before us in this license. My response to was density brought up, absolutely was density brought up, it was brought up at the April ALRC meeting. The May ALRC meeting and the June ALRC meeting. The legislative history on this is clear, this was before the ALRC three times in as many months. And each and every time, we heard from stakeholders. Especially that very first meeting in April where I think every member of the committee to a person was well aware that this is a very challenged neighborhood. We were all aware that there is no existing license at the Capital Petrol Gas Station Convenience Store where this application is. Seeking to purchase. So we took, we took density extremely seriously. We all knew that there's a public library branch directly across the street and a public health office. So that wasn't, uh, I I just wanted to assure my colleagues that, yes, I think Assistant City Attorney McReynolds was accurate. That maybe we didn't discuss specifics of density at our meeting last Wednesday, by the way, a meeting that lasted six hours. And the ALRC meeting in May lasted five hours. So yes, we take this seriously and I apologize if I'm coming across as a little defensive, but. Many of you follow our meetings, many of you participate in our meetings, many of my colleagues uh. Provide your feedback to us, I can't overstate how valuable that is. Many colleagues never share their opinions of applications in their district with the committee. And I encourage you to to reconsider that and 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 please consider engaging with us through whatever means is most convenient to you. And I can certainly help with that and happy to be involved in offline conversations about that. But in this case, I think the alder of the district, Alder Latimer Burris summarized it well a few minutes ago. And that is both at that initial April ALRC meeting, the first council meeting in May. When Refuel Pantry Incorporated had twelve applications on our agenda, purchasing all these Capital Petrol. Locations in the city of Madison and in a multitude of alder districts. Uh, the committee was really concerned with, with two of those, this being one of them. And it was because of density, because of the location involved. We heard from stakeholders that had concerns about the application at the time. As the alder of the district just testified, each and every one of those neighbors. That testified either in person or in writing at ALRC and council meetings have now reversed themselves. After meeting with the applicant and being convinced that the only way to clean up the eyesore that is the existing Capital Petrol property. Is through a new owner with the financial resources and the promises to clean up the property substantially. And the alder of the district is supportive of this license with conditions and that's what the ALRC is recommending to you. Tonight unanimously. But we all took this very seriously, again, we had three conversations about it. Part of the reason why I would believe that this was a unanimous recommendation tonight. Um, that you're considering of the ALRC is that Captain Gary, as the captain of the police district. Where this is located, said he had no objection to the granting of the license in the communication we received from his colleague. Captain Kamowski at the ALRC meeting, she being the police chief's non-voting member of the ALRC currently. So Captain Gary wisely said, although however, though. So Captain Gary wisely said, although however, though I'm requesting conditions. What you have before you in our recommendation of the committee are so-called standard conditions on Class A convenience stores, especially Class A convenience stores uh, that are seeking to sell wine as well. Uh, where we do not permit the sale of spirits if gas pumps are on the premises or uh, so-called Class A liquor licenses. So Class A liquor license is limited to wine in this case through our recommendation. But the various conditions you see before you are all meant to try to deal with the obvious issues of loitering, panhandling, retail theft and the like that sadly occurs around establishments like this one. Generally Class A establishments, especially more challenged neighborhoods. And that's what the conditions attempt to address. Now, am I under the, am I sitting here with rose colored glasses and think those conditions are the end all and be all? Absolutely not. But from my experience, what I've learned and talking with stakeholders, even license holders will admit that yes, it makes a difference. Yes, it's cleaned things up. It's not as bad as it was when we have, when we follow these conditions that you place on our license. So I I I just wanted to share all that and 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 want to close by letting you all know I am thrilled to be a resource. I'm thrilled to be a liaison to each of you, my colleagues uh, as it relates to alcohol license applications pending in your respective districts. So I I really want to thank those of you that do provide us your thoughts and recommendations at old neighborhood meetings and so forth and report back to us the outcome of those conversations with your stakeholders and the neighborhood association meetings and so forth. It is invaluable to the committee when we receive those resources. Um, so I I'm happy to answer any questions if there are about the three um, public hearings the ALRC had about this license at the appropriate time. Lastly, Mayor, just want to point out, I'm looking at the attendee list uh, for those that are still in this virtual meeting. And I just wanted to provide a bit of a public service announcement. There are some ALRC applicants that were with us last Wednesday at our meeting that are still attending the meeting who I don't think realize that their licenses were granted on as part of the consent motion. So with the exception of what we're discussing now in Handy Spot over by American Families Corporate Headquarters, the others in the attendee list that had the other, we're here for other alcohol license items. I just wanted to let them know, congratulations, those licenses were granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Like Alder Brevier, I also do want to clear up some things that I've heard throughout this meeting. I actually happen to attend all of the ALRC meetings for this. So just a couple of quick notes. One, the vote on June twenty-sixth was not, was not unanimous. I believe it was seven to one or maybe six to one, but there was one um, who voted against it. So I did provide in my blog post today some timestamps, but I do just want to give an overview because I know sometimes our memories can sort of, you know, play tricks on us. And so um, if you happen to watch it, the officer does note um, at around two twenty-seven in the meeting that MPD, which I believe the officer was referring to Captain Gary, uh, she did mention his concerns about saturation. She also noted that she did not have the data in front of her. I did note that I had the afforded, but there was no conversation about the data at that meeting. Um, at about two forty-six in the meeting, the attorney does note that this committee can consider density or ALRC can consider it. And then a committee member does remind the body that a business does not have a right to a liquor license and how hard it is to take away a liquor license once granted and notes discussions um, that that body has had to ask common council for um, us to look into legislation. Um, the, one of the alders on the committee, Alder Knox acknowledges the committee has the ability to discuss density. He mentions the item has been to ALRC twice already. Shares they have the tools to make the decision. However, uh, discussion about safety and health nor saturation. First, you know, it doesn't happen after that note. Um, Alder Latimer Burris um, uh, notes her, you know, sort of centers the business. And then from my conversations with neighbors in the area, especially from the neighborhood association, there is some conflict in how um, what they had to share is being framed. So I do just want to say that meeting mark or uh, two fifty in the meeting, there is some inaccuracies or some conflict between what um, how it was framed with what what neighbors have to share. So from my perspective with some neighbors, yes, some neighbors sort of are taking the stance where they don't want to come out for the thing, but they also don't want to see it there. And then some are coming, they just don't want this thing there at all. Um, and then also a committee member at about two fifty-two in the meeting, a committee member notes the purpose of the body having nothing to do with free enterprise and to look out for the safety and wellness, but it's, you know, it's supposed to look out for the safety and wellness of the community. Notes that this is a site already with problems even without a license granted. That still there to lead into a conversation about saturation or health and safety. Attorney Zillavy did did note in this meeting again at about the two fifty-three mark that the charge of the ALRC is to determine whether or not a license should be granted considering the health, safety and welfare of the community, whether or not it's good for a particular business person is not a relevant consideration. I'll say I I likely, I'm not sure if I asked her that, but I definitely was thankful because what I noticed is that the conversation wholeheartedly centered around the business and the business's ability to have a liquor license, almost as if they had a right to the, to the liquor license. Um, a couple I want to uh, note is um, this for me because there's, for whatever reason, there's this, there's this sort of framing about, oh, this is in District Twelve. Without taking into consideration District Twelve borders other districts in the city. And I think each of us sort of engages in items or things that we're concerned about in other districts. And there's really typically never any issue. Like I'm thankful when folks hit me up about something in housing, for example, in another district. I want to clear up some uh, assumptions about how I got involved or where I came into this is that. So most people who know me well enough know I'm absolutely nerdy. We can be in a committee meeting, I'll hear about an issue, I will immediately email the relevant staff member asking for data. Sometimes that's all I get. I'm satisfied with what I've learned. Other times I'll just dig into it and keep working on it. This just happens to be one of those issues. I lived hood leading up to the pandemic and maybe part ways through the pandemic before I lived on the the west side for a year to to quarantine with my son. So I'm well aware of the the issues in this area. So for Regina's item in particular, I wasn't aware of that I, until well after I got involved on this. So I'm, I don't want people to conflate the two on why I brought attention to this. I brought attention to this because I'm absolutely concerned about the health, the health and safety of that neighborhood. And I didn't think that that aspect of the liquor license was getting enough attention. And so um, so the other thing I want to note is that where some orders are, you know, they're bringing it rightfully so, bringing up how many liquor licenses we have in other parts of the city. The difference though is what the census data tell us about populations. In this particular area, it's absolutely a disadvantaged area. It's a lower income, it's higher poverty, it's higher crime. That census data, which I included also in Legista, I included in my blog post today, looks very different than some of the other areas of the city that do have a great number of um, uh, liquor licenses. So do 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 do, um. And then I want to just, the, I guess the last thing I just want to say is that I think really it is, we should be sort of tasking ourselves to ask ourselves whether or not we are burdening disadvantaged neighborhoods and asking them to take on more issues without necessarily providing them adequate resources. Most of us know that, you know, we've asked city agencies to submit these budgets that are asking or, you know, directing them to sort of like cut their budgets at five percent. And what does it look like for, like, are we able to sort of like help Hawthorne Library, for example, increase their ability uh, to have onsite security for forty hours a week, for example? Um, so we have to be honest with what we're saddling certain parts of the district, certain parts of the city with. And I I'm I'm, I'm absolutely confident if other parts of our city were dealing with some of these issues, we we wouldn't be even, we wouldn't have this conversation. This would not be a discussion point. It just wouldn't be. And thus far, it has not allowed it to be. So one thing I do want to just point people to before you make any decisions on this is to at minimum read the two facts that I provided in my blog today from the National Library of Medicine. That just gives you clear facts on what disadvantaged neighborhoods have to deal with when we talk about um, alcohol outlets in their neighborhoods, especially uh, without being adequately invested in. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Call on me as I'm about to like go review once again Alder Madison's blog. Um, so I I mean, I am going to review Alder Madison's blog again just before the vote, but I am I guess I'm just, I generally confused and maybe underinformed. Um, it's so, I don't, I don't know. I know that Alder Vitter is like a our, our in-house SME um, that can speak to this way better than I can. Um, so not calling on you to speak, but if if, or I'm not calling on the alder to speak, but if she wants to, that'd be great. I just, I'm, I'm just totally confused still, like why alcohol density is an issue? Um, I don't understand how granting one license here leads to this domino effect of other safety issues. I'm, I'm not, I don't fully understand why economic income or security is a consideration for alcohol licenses, like are we saying poor people can't drink? I I don't know. I'm sure that's not what's being said. Um, so I I I just, I don't fully understand how denying or approving this license largely changes behaviors or outcomes. Like Alder Curry said, I I think it sounds like we're speaking to a larger issue here. Um, like if someone's showing up drunk to a library, that's, that's, I feel like that's a bigger issue than someone buying beer from a store. So I just want to, like, I guess I'm concerned about whether or not we are addressing the root cause problem here. And in general, I am grateful that this kind of conversation brought to light some of the questions that I'm sure will be brought up when we look more broadly at alcohol density. Although um, I do think that we have a responsibility um, to be fair, kind of like, I think Alder Revere, Revere was alluding to in that many alders do not show up to ALRC to give input. And there's many alcohol licenses that, just like this one, that are approved in many areas of the city and do not receive the same level of scrutiny. And I think that having a, I I think that we do place a lot of trust in the ALRC. But if alcohol density um, and those safety concerns are of a broader issue to the city, it it might, it, I'm, I'm glad that we're having the conversation because it would behoove us to take a more generalized pro, policy that the ALRC can then enforce. Um, so I don't know, I, I, those are just generally things that I'm, I'm can, you know, just still wavering through my mind. I'm confused and waffling um, between what is the right decision here.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and uh, thank you to both um, Alder Brevier and um, Alder Knox. I'm going to get very emotional, but I'm going to slow this roll down because I'm going to get all this in. Um, I am going to support this license. Um, because I remember when the downtown library opened its space to the most vulnerable population. And there was a lot of pushback related to that. But the downtown library said that that was the right thing to do. And I've heard tonight many conflicting conversations. But I also heard that the community, and that's what the alder said, the community was willing to give this business um, in this area, an opportunity. But there are three things that shifted me toward my yes. The first is how convenient it is when I hear um, these terms used. Consider who benefits, who is burdened, who does not have a voice at the table. How can policymakers mitigate unintended consequences? And that seems to be floating when it is conven, I hear it when it's, it works and it's convenient. The second thing that I heard was analyzing root, and I read this, analyzing root causes of problems, the but why? The but why only raises to the top what's missing? The but why? And I think that um, I heard that um, when um, uh, earlier. But then I picked up the newspaper and in today's newspaper, the regional tech hubs federal award state is put on the map. Wisconsin to see forty-nine million dollars over five years in boost to bio health industry. And so uh, so Madison is a tale of two and three cities. And um, we've got so many problems that have been um, brought out in this long conversation. But it's more than this one area. There's a, there's a whole chondrum of problems that we have that we have to solve. And um, and so I'm going to support this and I'm going to support it because the neighborhood will work to figure out what fits and what does not fit. And I have just grown weary with throwing out the top of what that our, our um, our agenda says, but we don't follow. So I will be supporting, I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer Burris for the second time? Oh, I'm sorry. Alder Govindarajan. I, I thought you had disappeared, but you were next.
I keep having to move around. My apartment is leaking. Um, anyway, um, I call the previous question after the last two speakers. If that's a valid motion.
That's not a valid motion, Alder. But your sentiment is appreciated.
Thank you.
Alder Latimer Burris for the second time?
Yeah, I just need to correct this. And maybe it was because Alder Madison was not at every single um, uh, you know, meeting, including my community meeting to suggest that, uh, you know, she perhaps would know better than the neighborhood. As I said, when it was of issue, if people got to be heard, uh, we had uh, additional neighborhood meetings and I required that the owner go and talk to the neighborhood associations, landed those, laid those out, checked with them. So it's disingenuous, disingenuine to uh, to misconstrue the fact that um, that the neighborhood is, is, there's people that are fearful and import of speaking out. Uh, I isolated the different groups and just asked them what they thought. And I gave you a accurate assessment when I said seventy percent were either okay or willing to give a second chance and thirty percent were absolutely against it. So I talked to probably the people that uh, uh, Ms. Madison is suggesting. Um, we reached out on this one. Uh, we reached out. The other thing is if we're going to do this, um, you know, then we're going to need to start looking at alcohol density in every single neighborhood, every person that wants to do any kind of class, we gotta go through the neighborhood step by step. We We, you know, the, the system definitely needs to change for the alcohol licensing review committee. Um, there's a minor tweak that needs to be made, uh, that may be allowing more licenses. Getting granted, uh, you know, because of the way that the law is written. But I agree with Alder, um, Vivier, but they are intense when they go down there. As a matter of fact, in this neighborhood, there was another liquor store that wanted to go in a hundred percent liquor store. And the same neighborhood, if we look at East Washington, shut that down. They were very clear. I would say ninety-nine percent of them were like, absolutely not. So let's be clear, we engaged the neighborhood, and I don't know, maybe there's a couple of pe- people that Alder Madison talked to. Uh, that we didn't reach, but we, we reached out far and wide. I was insistent upon it. And I'm just reporting what they said. Not my, I'm not pro-business or anti-neighborhood. I am for the neighborhood and for business, period.
Thank you, Alder.
That's it.
Alder Knox for the second time?
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, my, my support for neighborhood quality of life issues. I think it's pretty solid if you check the record. I don't always say everything that's on my mind, okay? So, um, but I believe in this case, I'm supporting the neighborhood wishes. On this issue, but I also wanted to say, I think this council needs to be very careful. You know, this kind of reminds me of something from the past. Um, where there was a certain, and, and Mike Favier, you'll remember this. There was a certain order person that decided there was some unofficial moratorium on alcohol establishments. On the south side. Which, which I found very hypocritical considering that we had abundance of those. Uh, alcohol establishment in my district at the time on Regent Street. So it kind of smacks as a little subtle racism. Oh, in certain communities, we can't have alcohol establishments. But in other communities that might be a little more affluent, oh, it's fine because they know how to manage alcohol consumption. This is a slippery slope. And you guys need to be real careful when you start trying to create these. Uh, boxes where certain neighborhoods are entitled to certain things and other neighborhoods are not. And I'm just going on the record right now and telling you, I think we voted seventeen to two. To, um, support the alcohol establishment in that case. So I'm just saying be real careful where we're driving here, but in this particular case, I'm gonna support this issue.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison for the second time.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and absolutely the last time. Um, I just wanted to, uh, note Alder, you know, for the body. Alder Latimer Burris noted, uh, some percentages, I believe. On ALRC, she noted the percentages at fifty-fifty, that fifty percent of the neighbors were for and fifty percent were against. Tonight, she notes, I believe if I wrote this down correctly, that seventy percent of, uh, neighbors now are for and thirty percent are against it. I don't know where the percentages changed, if there were new people added or, or whatever, but. I do want to just point out that those percentages have changed over meetings. They continue to change. The other thing I just want to point out, when we talk about race, we should actually be taking race into consideration. The census data also points to that this hot, this area absolutely is a bit more diverse than other parts of the city. And one thing that I did note in the blog post is that this creates, you know, granting. A higher density of alcohol outlets in disadvantaged neighborhoods also creates an environmental injustice. Which creates this double, double jeopardy scenario. So again, Alder Zillavy and Attorney McReynolds share the charge of ALRC. And part of their charge is to consider the health and safety of the, of the community. It's not just about the, the right of a business owner and their ability to be granted a license and be successful. But it is, it, they should be determining whether or not this is good for the health and wellness of the. The neighborhoods such as what happened in other parts of the city. So I just don't want us to lose sight of what Alder Zillavy has noted, Alder. The, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, the two attorneys have noted for us. And I've also quoted in my blog post today. I just want to keep reiterating that in case anyone is looking for where to find the information. But the last thing I'll just share is, is that. There are multitude of issues where many of us or some of us feel like there were not the right decisions made. On a committee, a commission or a board, the item comes before us and we decide to do something different. I think it is, is that for me, it is the same situation in this matter. The committee itself, I respect all of them, the work that they put in, but I just don't think that they were, um, they did not. Consider the health and wellness of that community before deciding to grant the liquor license, so.
Thank you, Alder. I have another Alders in the queue wishing to speak. The motion is to grant the license. On number three. Anticipating disagreement, all those in favor of granting. Alder Revere?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a point of clarifications to grant with several conditions?
Yes, thank you, Alder. The motion is to grant with conditions. And all those in favor of granting with conditions, I, those opposed, no. As your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you. Aldo Wegeare? Aldo Wegeare, aye. Aldo Harrington McKenney?
Aye.
Aldo Harrington McKenney, aye. Aldo Knox?
Aye.
Aldo Knox, aye. Aldo Latimer Burris?
Aye.
Aldo Latimer Burris, aye. Aldo Madison?
No.
Aldo Madison, no. Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
No.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford, no. Aldo Miyazee?
Yes.
Aldo Miyazee, aye. Aldo Rumel?
Yes.
Aldo Rumel, aye. Aldo Tischler?
Uh, no.
Aldo Tischler, no. Aldo Revere?
Aye.
Aldo Revere, aye. Aldo Vitterver?
No.
Aldo Vitterver, no. Aldo Helya?
Aye.
Helya, aye. Aldo Bennett?
No.
Aldo Bennett, no. Aldo Conklin?
Aye.
Aldo Conklin, aye. Aldo Curry?
Aye.
Aldo Curry, aye. Aldo Duncan?
Aye.
Aldo Duncan, aye. Aldo Evers is excused. Aldo Field?
No.
Aldo Field, no. Aldo Figaro Cole?
No.
Aldo Figaro Cole, no. Aldo Govindarajan?
Aye.
Aldo Govindarajan, aye. So, uh. So I believe it's twelve eyes, seven nose. Am I missing someone? No, that's correct. Twelve eyes, seven nose.
That's correct. So with twelve eyes, the license is granted with conditions? And that will bring us to item sixteen. Item sixteen is Legisstar eight-three-seven-one-four. A new license for Handyspot one-oh-eight, located at fifty-five fifty-one East Park Boulevard. President Figaro Cole, oh, Alder Vitterver? Can we have a five-minute recess? Alder Vitterver moves a five-minute recess? Is there a second? Moved in second to take a five-minute recess? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll take a five-minute recess. Let's say ten-thirty-five, shall we? We are two minutes out. Two minutes out from reconvening the council meeting. Encourage alders to come back to their computers and turn their. Video back on. We are one minute out. One minute out from reconvening. We have half of the alders that we need to do so. All right, if all those are back at your computers, please do turn your camera on and let me know you're there. We are still short quorum. All right, I will call the council back to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you. Aldo Wegeare? Back to him. Aldo Harrington McKenney?
Sorry, present.
Aldo Harrington McKenney and Aldo Wegeare here. Aldo Knox?
Here.
Aldo Knox is present. Aldo Latimer Burris? Right back?
Yeah.
Aldo Latimer Burris is present. Aldo Madison?
Here.
Aldo Madison is present. Aldo Martinez Rutherford?
Here.
Aldo Martinez Rutherford is present. Aldo Miyazee? Get back. Aldo Rumel?
Present.
Aldo Rumel is present. Aldo Tischler?
Uh, here.
Aldo Tischler is present. Aldo Revere?
Here.
Aldo Revere is present. Aldo Vitterver?
Here.
Aldo Vitterver is present. Aldo Helya?
Here.
Aldo Helya is present. Aldo Bennett?
Here.
Aldo Bennett is present. Aldo Conklin?
Present.
Aldo Conklin is present. Aldo Curry?
Here.
Aldo Curry is present. Aldo Duncan?
Here.
Aldo Duncan is present. Aldo Evers is excused. Aldo Field?
Here.
Aldo Field is present. Aldo Figaro Cole?
Here.
Aldo Figaro Cole is present. Aldo Govindarajan?
Here.
Aldo Govindarajan is present. I'm showing eighteen present at the moment and Aldo Miyazee probably soon to come.
Quorum having been achieved, we are back in session and the item before us is item sixteen. Legisstar eight-three-seven-one-four, a new license for Handyspot one-oh-eight LLC. On the item, President Figaro Cole, a motion, please. Aldo Miyazee is present.
Move to adopt.
Uh, move to grant with conditions?
Thank you. Move to grant with conditions.
Second, moved in seconded to grant with conditions. Thank you. Are there questions for staff on item sixteen? Alder Revere?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd ask Deputy City Clerk Jim Verbic to please. Confirm what the action of the alcohol license review committee was last Wednesday at our meeting. I'll just add that it's not the motion that was just made.
Correct. The motion last week was to refer back to the committee.
And thank you, Jim. And can you confirm the applicant did not appear at our meeting? He registered for the meeting, but when we called the item, he was not either in person or virtually. Present. Is that, was my memory correct?
The applicant was there in person early in the meeting. He did leave. Uh, he came to me either the day after, the day after that and said, uh, he had to leave to, um. To a medical-related issue, um, and then tried to connect, uh, through phone and was unable to. To be heard through the phone, um, so he was not recognized, uh, when his item came back up. I also add that, uh, I, I looked into this one again, and this was one of our licenses that. Uh, failed to renew in time, so this one had previously been issued but missed renewal this year. And so this is a reapplication, uh, and I'm, I'm assuming it might be asked, but the. Uh, and I'm assuming it might be asked, but the, the previous license that expired on, uh, June thirtieth had one condition. That condition was that the Class A liquor limited to wine sales only.
Thank you. On that point, however, this application is not for Class A liquor, correct? It's only for Class A beer? That is one of the questions that they wished to pose to the applicant was if that was purposeful or not.
You're correct. The, the previous applicant, the previous license was for Class A beer, Class A liquor. This application is just for Class A beer.
And then perhaps lastly here, Jim, would it be appropriate for the council to, to perhaps consider re-referring this to the ALRC to our special meeting scheduled for next week on July eleventh? Rather than uh, consider it fully tonight? In other words, what I'm asking is could this be added to the special ALRC meeting agenda of next week? Given the extent of the circumstance?
Yes, it could be added.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Present Figaro Cole?
Well, on that note, can I, can I do, do my motion or take it back?
Uh, you can make another motion, uh, or you can ask permission from the body to change the motion.
Well, can I, well, I just want to go back to then, um, I am looking at the agenda now, I'm sorry, I wasn't earlier, to recommend, um, the referral to the public hearing of the Alcohol License Review Committee on the special meeting July, I forgot already.
Eleven.
July eleventh. So that will be my motion.
Is there any objection to that being the motion? Alder Miazze, is that an objection?
No, just a second.
All right. Thank you, Ald. With no objection, the motion is to re-refer. There are further questions for staff? Seeing none, the motion is to re-refer, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing no objection, the item is re-referred to the ALRC. And that will bring us to item eighty-four. Item eighty-four is Legislar eight three eight seven seven, creating sections of the Madison General Ordinances related to informed consent to permit the Office of the City Attorney to communicate information related to its representation of the city in order to consult with other attorneys for purposes of collaboration and more effective legal representation. On item eighty-four, present Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt item eighty-four. Are there questions for staff on item eighty-four?
Yeah, I did. I would just ask Attorney.
Alder Lattimer Burris?
Thank you. Sorry. I didn't raise my hand. I apologize. Um, you were able to catch me. Yay. Um, I just wanted to ask, ask Attorney Haas, um, is like, if, does that, does this cover, like, if there's a conflict, let's say an alder is accused of doing something? I mean, so I just want to know that the whole parameter is like, you know, how this plays out. Not, it's, it's late, getting tired, you know, so I don't want to go too deep into it, but I just want to know your overview of it. The scenario of when point of, yeah.
You go ahead. Point of order?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a question. I think that's a different item. Right?
Oh, is that?
You're talking about the harassment one?
Wait.
No.
Alders.
No.
Alders.
I'm sorry.
This is not what we do.
Yeah.
We know how to run a meeting. We know how to participate in a meeting. It doesn't change just because we're on Zoom. Alder Lattimer Burris has a question about this item. Attorney Haas, can you please just give us an outline of this item?
Sure. Uh, thank you. Um, this, as we, I tried to explain in the memo that's in Legislar. Um, in my view, this would be, uh, the council kind of giving us a stamp of approval in how we have always conducted ourselves as attorneys for the city. This issue was brought to light by a recent opinion of the American Bar Association that focused on attorneys participating in listservs with other attorneys and what can and cannot be communicated by an attorney uh, regarding their representation of a client. And, uh, you know, we have for years participated in, for instance, the listserv sponsored by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, as well as the weekly Zoom call that the league sponsors for municipal, Wisconsin municipal attorneys who are members of the league. We go to conferences where we talk about, uh, different legal issues and how they relate to, um, you know, situations that we might have addressed. We share our expertise with other attorneys, just like we ask other municipal attorneys or other attorneys for the state or federal government, um, or even private attorneys, uh, to share their expertise about specific legal issues. That's been done for years, but this issue, as I said, has been brought to light by a recent opinion of the American Bar Association. The state has a very similar rule to the model rule that the, that the ABA has published, which essentially says that attorneys cannot be disclosing any information about their client, even the identity of their client, without the client's consent or their implied consent, which is a, a bit of a technical term, but uh, we're not really relying on implied consent. When that opinion came out, there was a lot of discussion amongst attorneys, municipal attorneys in Wisconsin about how that would affect, uh, what we have frankly, always done. And, um, several of us thought that the best way to document our client's approval of us continuing those practices was to have some either resolution or ordinance where the governing body would sort of give us this general informed consent, meaning we have informed you about the nature of the communications we might have, you know, what the pros and cons of us being able to continue to do that. And then the council can decide whether or not it wants to allow us to continue that practice. Um, in speaking, I, I mentioned at the CCC meeting uh, this evening that I happen to be on the, uh, Professional Ethics Committee for the State Bar of Wisconsin. I've talked to the, the staff council for the state bar who made the point that with most organizations, it's the chief executive officer that we could go to to res- obtain this consent. But I think out of an abundance of caution, just to make sure that the governing body is also on board, we thought it made sense to also seek the consent of the council. Um, this is then an opportunity for the council either now or in the future to say either, yes, we're going to provide this consent, or we want to restrict the consent, that there are specific things that you do not want us to be communicating, uh, to other attorneys. Um, or i- in the future to reconsider the consent entirely. I will say that, of course, our attorneys, um, you know, we use our professional judgment and what we share. We would not be sharing information that we think in any way would disadvantage the city's legal interests or be communicated with an audience that might include an attorney who is adverse to the city. Typically, that does not happen in, in our cases because, you know, the, the main listserv we're talking about here is the league's listserv, which is other municipal attorneys. It's, it's typically not attorneys that we would be involved in litigation with. In addition, I also mentioned that in a sense, this, this rule is a little bit unrealistic when it comes to public governmental attorneys. As in-house attorneys, everybody knows who we represent. That's not a secret, but the rule theoretically would even prohibit us from revealing who our client is. Um, I did provide a link to the, to the ABA rule in the memo, if anybody wants to dive, uh, deeper into it, but uh, maybe I'll stop there and see if there are any other questions.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing, uh, Alder Wahili?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Attorney Haas. Uh, could you, uh, elaborate? Who could be, uh, the clients? Like, i- if you can elaborate more of the client, that would be great. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Alder. It's, it, it actually could be, that can sometimes be a complicated question, but the short answer is our client is the city, uh, the city of Madison, you know, so we represent the council, elected officials, all the agencies. Um, uh, you know, all of its committees. It gets complicated when we talk about the fact that we don't represent individual, uh, you know, staff members or individual elected officials. Um, if there is some, you know, uh, complaint or, um, uh, matter where they might be adverse to the interests of the city. So that gets into what our, you know, ethical obligations are as far as representation and identifying exactly who our client is in, um, in individual cases. But, um, you know, I, I can just give you a couple of examples of how this may play out. Um, you know, we were talking about alcohol licenses earlier. There might be a discussion on a listserv or in one of these, uh, weekly Zoom meetings about, hey, our municipality has a situation where it is debating whether or not this alcohol license should be approved and what do attorneys on the listserv or in this Zoom call think about arguments that are being made related to, you know, the health and, uh, public health and, and safety? Um, you know, and just to gather input from different perspectives of experienced attorneys that have dealt with, with these issues in the past, that could be a, you know, a big benefit to us. Um, just to make sure that we haven't, you know, missed anything and that we're thinking of all the angles and that we can um, sort of incorporate that, uh, that input into the, um, into the advice that we give to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler?
Oh, anyway, um, have other municipalities' attorneys asked their councils to put on this, or are we the first?
Um, I, I'd say we're probably amongst the first half dozen. This, um, ABA opinion just came out, uh, I don't know, roughly a month, month and a half ago. And I have to say it, 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 I think it took the municipal attorney community a little bit by surprise because it would theoretically create such a departure from what our standard practice has been. So I, I think the meeting, the, um, the Wednesday Zoom call we had really right after this opinion came out, people started discussing it and talking about uh, crafting resolutions or ordinances to help provide some comfort level for their attorneys to be able to continue to use these, um, you know, different avenues to, to help with our practice.
Okay. Just a follow-up, if I, if I may.
Go ahead.
Do, do you assume other, uh, cities are going to follow, follow the line with, 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 with voting for a similar, similar change in ordinance like this?
Yeah, you know, I know of one specific attorney who is, uh, I mean, he's with a law firm representing various communities. So he was also one of the, one of the first to be drafted in ordinance. I know at least one of those communities has adopted it. I, you know, I'll find out tomorrow when we have our weekly meeting if others have followed suit, but, um, I know that, um, there are others that we're, we're definitely considering it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, item eighty-four has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, item eighty-four has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item eighty-four. And move on to item one seventeen. Item one seventeen is Legislar eight three nine one seven, adopting the sexual harassment appendix to the elected and appointed official code of ethical conduct. On item one seventeen, present Figaro Cole, a motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded. Vice President Duncan is seconding. He just can't get to the mute button quick enough. Um, all right. So moved and seconded. Are there questions for staff on item one seventeen? Seeing none, Alder Knox, questions for staff? Alder Knox, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, my hand froze there. Um, um, uh, my question is for, um, Attorney Haas.
Go ahead.
Uh, and I sent you an email. I don't know if you received it, but I didn't read the response. Did you receive it? Uh, yes, I did. I, I did respond to Alder. Can, can you respond to my question for the benefit of the council? Sure. Let me pull up the email here. Um, Alder Knox's question really had to do with, um, whether alders are subject to applicable discrimination and harassment laws and ordinances, federal, state and city, uh, laws like city employees are. And so my response was that, um, the issue that the council has discussed in the past has always been enforcement of any policy related to alder conduct. Um, now, the city can be held liable as an employer if there's a hostile work environment that is created by anybody associated with the city, whether it's city staff or an elected official, and the city does not address it. That goes to the city's potential liability. But as we've discussed previously, alders cannot be suspended or, um, or terminated like city employees may be under, uh, APM three dash five and other city disciplinary policies. So this proposed language is aimed at both establishing expectations and standards for alders related to what could be considered sexual harassment or discrimination and to provide members of the public with a process for filing complaints and having them reviewed and addressed, um, by the city. So I, I, I would also point out that this policy, whether or not this appendix is adopted, does not really change the options for what the consequences could be for an alder. We still have the state statutes that really provide, you know, uh, a, a few different options if the city or the council determined that there were official misconduct by an alder. That could be basically a resolution to censure. Uh, the voters could recall an alder or the council could hold a hearing to determine whether the alder should be removed. Um, that's true regardless of whether or not, um, this policy is adopted. This pol- if there are findings under this policy, that could be the basis for, or, or help to support a finding that there were official misconduct, but it does not change the options, um, uh, for, for the council. Okay. And, and would, would that be the same for any protected status harassment or discrimination like, um, you know, other forms, uh, national origin discrimination, racial, whatever? Would that, all of the protected categories? For the most part? Uh, so this policy is focused on sexual harassment and discrimination, but I think you're correct that, you know, if there are any type of behavior that could be considered official misconduct. any type of behavior that could be considered official misconduct or malfeasance in office could be the basis for action by the council.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer, questions?
Yeah, so I have two questions. One is, so this is just adding on additional process to what we already can do. You know, for example, if we were, you know, instead of straight going to a resolution without a, for censorship or to be censured, without a process, this is putting the process that, I'm not going to say appears to be missing, but is that what this is focused around? Is the process to help?
Yeah, I think, Alder, I think it would be fair to say that it's a process that does not exist now that allows for, you know, a fact finding process that is that is short of a full blown hearing in front of the council. It allows members of the public to file a complaint and then to have HR and civil rights, you know, review the complaint, do an investigation if they think is warranted, and make conclusions if they can based on, you know, on that investigation. So that currently does not really exist in a formal way. So it does, I think, provide a way for the council, a way for the city, you know, to gather information short of having a full blown hearing.
And I did read it and I was trying to figure out what's the differences before, you know, in what we have already. And where is it in this disordinance resolution that where it talks about what protections are to say somebody accuses me of doing something, you know, inappropriate and where the accused and the accused, if you would, have equal weight and it stays, you know, maybe relatively private, like a human resource issue, instead of being, you know, put out on someone's blog that someone's doing something without touching any particular issue. What safeguards are we? Does this have safeguards in there? Could you point out where the safeguards are? Make sure that we're not impinging anybody's reputation? So I'm going to ask that and then I'm going to ask my other question so I can just go silent. Is this include? No, I think you already asked this. This does not include harassment. It just includes sexual harassment. But if somebody is generally harassing to somebody, does it include that? Does it have only the sexuality tends to it?
Right, right. This this appendix really focuses on sexual harassment and discrimination. You know, there is there is other language in the code of conduct that you have already adopted, you know, related to conduct among alders and members of the public that is broader. So this really focuses on sexual harassment and discrimination.
And the other part I had to ask is just in the process and maybe if it's not right in the written word, but as you've discussed it, as you've been drafting it, how do we ensure that we don't, that we're not investigating, you know, the, what is it called? The the cart before the horse? In other words, we're we're treating it seriously like the human resource, you know, you know, like in human resources, you can't just say, you know, somebody did something and then everybody in the public knows. I mean, it's very, you know, very private and people are called in and so forth. So where is that in this ordinance or in the drafting? What was the legislative intent?
Right. So the, on the top of the second page of the of the appendix, it talks about somebody who has a complaint can contact the council office, the council chief of staff, who will connect that individual with Department of Civil Rights, Human Resources, and the City Attorney's Office. And those agencies would decide if an investigation is warranted internally or referral to another agency. For instance, if it appears to be, you know, criminal conduct, if the police department should be notified or any other agency. And and then if an investigation is completed, the council president could issue a public summary of the findings. As with other, you know, similar investigations, we would look at whether or not there's certain information or identities of individuals that should be redacted before any report is made public. So as drafted, that's really, you know, the focus is to get a complaint in front of agencies that might, you know, deal with these types of issues. And then for us to decide whether, you know, an investigation should be conducted by one of those agencies or an outside attorney or the police department or or any other agency. And then to conclude with a report that could become public.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Romo, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can you help me understand why members of other boards and commissions are part of this whole process? Because it seems like there is a remedy if there were some member of a board that wasn't an alder. You could, you know, refer the appointment to the mayor's office, for example, and that's not really mentioned. So I'm just curious why that was even added to this document, which seems to be about alders.
Well, certainly the sponsor could weigh in. I guess I would just note that the the original code of conduct applies to BCC members as well. So the thinking may have been that that this should as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Attorney House. My question is, you talked about the investigation being warranted. So what will be the fiscal clarification, like, you know, when we are trying to investigate? What will be the fiscal note on this ordinance?
Well, that's a good question because it could really vary. It could be none at all. You know, it could be a complaint comes in and HR and DCR in our office decides that it doesn't meet a threshold where an investigation should be warranted. It could be, on the other extreme, it could be a serious matter where we think it makes sense to hire an outside attorney to conduct an investigation, to be fair to all parties and to make sure that we don't have a conflict of interest. And that there could be some cost to that, but it's hard to, you know, estimate really what it could be because it could really vary quite a bit from from one case to the next.
So when we pass ordinance, we always look into the fiscal implication. So if we pass this and, for example, if we have an issue that's a little bit more serious and we have to hire an outside legal person, who's going to pay that?
Well, we have had cases in the past, I think, where that's been absorbed by either DCR or HR. But if it's not, if there are not funds available in the budget, we would need to come to the council and ask to to appropriate funds.
And would it be something that we can allocate into the council office budget for the future? Or is it going to be consumed by other departments?
I believe in the past it has not come out of the council office budget.
Thank you.
So perhaps some context here. First of all, just to be clear, this is a resolution, not an ordinance amendment. So resolutions don't generally have fiscal notes. In cases where we conduct investigations, that is something that HR and DCR routinely do and is included in their functions and their budgets. And the only question here is whether or not that process would be applied in the case of the council or not. So I don't think it's a significant financial impact. But nonetheless, yes, of course, the staff that do these investigations and their time costs money. Simply that's, that's their jobs, right? That's what they get paid to do. So if it's not this investigation, there would be another investigation. You know, this is what they do. The cost might be a delay in how long it takes to get through an investigation. And now the council did recently increase the investigatory staff at Department of Civil Rights. So perhaps they have some capacity now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alder Knox, questions for the second time?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I guess I have questions about, I guess, the authority of Department of Civil Rights, Human Resources, and maybe even the City Attorney's Office to investigate a elected official. Can you weigh in on that a little bit? Because obviously, I would think investigating is one thing, but actually where it talks about some action from that investigation, I would think that would be something that the council has some authority to do, like censoring, like you mentioned. The voters can maybe initiate a recall, I think, possibly. So where's the authority for these entities to investigate an elected official who we're basically management for the city? Want to explain? You kind of get where I'm going, Mike?
No, I think that's a good question, Alder. And I think the the short answer is that this policy would specifically provide that authority. Where, you know, right now it's a little bit unclear. I completely agree that the outcome or the consequences would be up to to the council. This would provide an avenue, as I said, for an investigation if it's warranted and for for somebody to be somebody with expertise and conducting investigations and making fact finding and conclusions to to complete that and pass along the results to be considered or not considered by the council. You know, we've always been, we've talked in the past about the difficulty with fitting alders under APM 3-5, for instance, because that's a mayoral directive. And there's separation of powers issues in applying that to alders. Although, as I said, we have, the city has a responsibility to make, to maintain a, you know, a harassment free workplace. And so there can be an APM 3-5 complaint filed against an alder, but we we end up sort of running into a roadblock about, okay, what do we do about the results of the investigation? That is not the same as it as it applies to city staff. So I think it's a it's a valid question you're raising. And I think the answer is this this proposal would provide those offices with the authority to conduct the investigation.
Okay, and outside of this, like right now, someone could go to the state? Isn't there like an ethics committee with the state they can go to? And what are there other avenues if this, if we don't do this? For someone that has a discrimination complaint?
Well, you know, this is, it's a little bit unique because, you know, this is really targeted at conduct of an alder towards members of the public. Not really, you know, city staff. This is, this was, I think, intended to sort of fill a gap in allowing the public an avenue to to file complaints. And so, you know, it's not something that would be handled by the Wisconsin Ethics Commission. I don't think it's necessarily something that would be handled by the by the state. You know, equal, yeah, the state.
Equal rights division.
Right. Employment State Equal Rights Division. Because it's not really an employment matter.
There's no entity that that has authority over elected officials?
Right, right. That's basically true. And also, I keep neglecting to point this out and Karen rightfully reminds me that, you know, part of this, the purpose of this is to really establish standards or expectations not only for alder behavior towards members of the public, but for alder behavior towards each other and behavior of members of city boards and commissions and committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington-McKinney, questions?
Yes, my first question is that in this fact finding process, you mentioned that somebody with expertise and authority will do the fact finding. And also in the conversation, it was HR and the mayor said this HR, the Department of Civil Rights, they have that expertise and now they have extra staffing. And I guess what I'm asking is that in the drafting of this amendment, of this resolution, was there a consulting with HR, the Department of Civil Rights? And when you were, when this was being drafted? Let me land there and have you answer that question.
Yep, certainly. HR and DCR had a hand in helping to draft this this proposed policy. We wanted to make sure that all of those three agencies were on board as far as how it would work and whether we thought it was a workable process.
And in reading it, and we had a very lengthy discussion at the executive committee. In the reading of it, it sounded as though the chief of staff was the decision maker and determining. And am I wrong? And so I heard two things is that it's a collaborative effort with the chief of staff, with the Department of Civil Rights and HR. But I seem to read that was landing more on one entity, which is the chief of staff. So I might be wrong. Please correct me if I am.
Right. I think the the role of the chief of staff in this proposal is really to facilitate the complaint, be a person that a member of the public can go to or an alder or a BCC member can go to to file the complaint. And then the chief of staff would pass it along to DCR and the City Attorney's Office. This proposed language does not have a role for the chief of staff in in the investigation or making any conclusions. I think the thought was that that would really put the chief of staff in an awkward position to be, you know, conducting an investigation of alders who are really the chief of staff's bosses.
Right. And because, so I'm glad that you said that because there is a fogginess and I don't, I didn't hear and I didn't read that clarity because it did seem to put the chief of staff in a very challenging decision to have to make those decisions when you've got HR and you've got the Department of Civil Rights and it's their job to do those kinds of questioning. So it was kind of, it was kind of not clear to me.
Right. I mean, I'm looking at the at the draft again, and the only role for the chief of staff really is to be a conduit, to be a resource that people can file a complaint and then they would they would pass it on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Tischler, questions?
Yeah. This is written in the past tense. So I guess my question is, does investigation of actions take place, like after we pass this tonight? Or, you know, can this be things said and done, you know, going back several years? you know, can this be things said and done, you know, going back several years?
Um, uh, it it's a good question, Alder. I I I think, you know, we my feeling was that this would be a prospective policy. Um, I don't recall really any discussion we had on that. Um, though, so um, um, I I don't know if I have a really a definite answer for you. I mean, the
Attorney House, the the it, the action is 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 instigated by a complaint from the public, right? So if if go, if this is adopted tonight and going forward, someone from the public puts forth a complaint, that complaint would go through this process.
Right.
So it it nothing would happen until a complaint was brought.
Right. And I and I think the question was, could a complaint be brought for actions prior to this policy going into effect? Uh, you know, I think that was, that was always a poss, an option, even without having a formal policy. If a member of the the public brought us a complaint that was serious enough to look into, um, you know, I think we would, you know, we would have be having a discussion about um, what, if anything, the the city could or should do about it.
Thank you, Alder. President Figaro call?
This is a quick yes or no answer. Attorney House, have we processed complaints um against alders before without this policy?
Uh, yes.
Have they um?
Oh, I I I'm sorry. I I don't know that we've had well, yes, I guess we have even complaints from the public.
Yes. So again, the intent here of the policy is to establish a process because every time those complaints come, it's kind of like we don't know which which direction to go. It's not that we are not doing, it's not like you guys don't know how to do your job. You're doing your job. You have, you're following the statute. This just keeps the guidelines that you're already using and formalizing them. So there's nothing new here in, you know, except writing down the standard operating procedures that you guys follow today and stretching them. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I I would say every, you know, and this obviously, this does not happen often, but whenever it's happened since I've been here, there's, we've have always returned to this debate about what should the process be? What do we have the authority to do? And so I think this language would certainly clarify what the council expects. Uh, so how the council expects city staff to handle such complaints.
And the public, the transparency piece for the public. So it's not like, like your hands are completely tied without this policy. This is just reinforcing procedures that you guys already have put in place. Um, but they're not kind, they're not formalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. No other alders in queue. Alder Knox, questions for the third time?
Yes, thank you. Um, I thought I heard you say this is for the public. What about staff complaints? Would it be applicable for both?
Uh, yes, the, I mean, staff have a couple of options. Um, the the original Code of Conduct permitted staff to to use that process. Also, APM three dash five would allow staff to file a complaint where an alder was the respondent. Um, again, we've always sort of run into, okay, well, we can do the investigation, but then we sort of hit a roadblock about what the potential consequences would be under APM three dash five. But we do have an obligation to to look into those complaints if they are filed by staff against an alder.
But this doesn't resolve that that issue? That you were?
Um, uh, I think it it provides a little bit more detail in these cases about, you know, how an investigation would be conducted, who conducts it. Um, and it's a a little bit different track than than the APM three dash five, which has always created, you know, a a little bit of a headache in trying to figure out how to um, process those complaints.
So the current Code of Conduct, would you say would address all other protected category complaints? True?
Um, let me double check here. Been a while since I looked at that originally.
Because my question is, we don't want to add this, and then we add the next one, and then we add the next one. You know what I mean? And we keep doing addendums when we do this all that one, one time.
So, right, the existing Code of Conduct does address bullying, harassment and discrimination. I believe, and again, you know, the sponsor can weigh in, but I I believe that the the interest here was trying to more specifically define what is considered to be sexual harassment or discrimination with more specific examples.
But the original code is applicable to all the protected categories, including sexual harassment. Is that true?
Um,
because that's a protected.
Right, right, right. It does, it does include.
Gender harassment?
Right.
Okay.
It doesn't include harassment, yes.
So my question is, why is this necessary?
Um, well,
that might be a hard question for you. Maybe that's not a question.
Alder, that's not really a question for staff.
I get it. I'll I'll re, I'll redraw that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney, questions for the second time?
Second time. Um, and if there is a um, complaint from an alder, would then that be a staff, how does that? Uh, will will that, let me just kind of back up. Um, if there is a complaint by an alder, um, would then that go through the already um, APM three dash five? Is that how that would be resolved or handled?
Uh, a complaint, a complaint by an alder involving another alder, is that your question?
No, a staff person. Would that be the process that that alder would use?
Um, if an alder has a complaint against a staff person?
Yes.
Uh, that potentially could be an APM three dash five. I don't believe it would fall under this Code of Conduct because the Code of Conduct is really um, you know, concerned with conduct of alders and and BCC members, not city staff members.
Uh, that's right. Alder, if if an alder had a complaint about a city staff person, it would go through the the normal process of complaints about employees.
Thank you. That was my question.
Yeah, and we would handle it accordingly. All right, I have no other alders in the queue with questions for staff. Item one seventeen has been moved and seconded is their discussion. Alder Knox.
Yeah, um, I guess for me, um, if the current Code of Conduct that um, addresses uh, forms of discrimination, then I think that's adequate as long as it has the step in procedures of if someone would make a complaint, they need to just know what those steps are. Um, I'm not certain that it does. I was trying to pull it up just to look to see if it had those same um, investigative steps. If not, then um, you know, I would think that we could just apply that and cover all forms of protected status discrimination under the city's um, anti harassment and discrimination laws.
Thank you, Alder. Is there further discussion? Seeing Alder Martinez Rutherford.
My apologies. I was trying to get on this a little bit quicker. Um, I, uh, one of the things with this for me is like it's adding something that kind of gives people a way to protect those who are part of the gender diverse community. Um, it really brings that up in a very explicit way that for me feels like it is um, important, especially knowing that we have uh, people that serve on boards and commissions here in the city that are also part of the gender diverse community. Um, and so I am very grateful that that's included and and although you know, whatever the next person that comes in after me or that is trans or non-binary, it kind of gives a an option and a recourse for them. And I feel like that's very important. So I am grateful that this uh, has come around and uh, just wanted to speak to that. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro call?
Just, I mean, like, a quick note. I mean, it's twenty twenty four. Is this something that we need to be discussing at this level of detail to write a policy that that explains to people what is unacceptable behavior? Um, I would say no, that that will be a day where I will celebrate when we don't have to explain this kind of um, situations. But the fact is that we all come from different backgrounds, from different cultures, from different mindsets, and sometimes what it seems okay to you, it really isn't okay for other people. So this policy, if anything, in addition to creating a process on for the complaint process, it just let's use it as a way of awareness to make sure that the things that are listed there are things that you are. If you are already, I mean, if you're an alder that knows that everything on that list is inappropriate, that a a sexual joke is inappropriate, that a touching someone's behind is inappropriate, whatever. If you're one of those others that know all that kind of behavior and this doesn't apply to you, more power to you. But if if you're someone that that perhaps needs a reminder on it, this is an opportunity to to get in touch with that what is appropriate behavior. No, I I am, I I pushed this together and it really, it's appalling for me that we had to be, that we had to make that clarity. I I this is, this is language that is used in our corporate world everywhere because of the same thing, because people need to because even though in twenty twenty four, we still had to spell out what sexual harassment is. And this is something that the United Nations has spelled out. So I don't know why um, why this wouldn't apply for us. For me, for us, it's, for me, this is an opportunity for for ourselves and for the public and uh, to create awareness among ourselves and on the public. So um, it doesn't cause any harm. It it just creates awareness and it should make us be better human beings among each other. So um, I appreciate everyone's feedback. We had a very good, robust discussion on this past CCE meeting and the last meeting. Um, I really appreciate the support and the and the feedback provided to make the policy better. And definitely thank you, House, for all the work and the HR and and DCR team for for the support on 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 the wording. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I will be supporting it uh, for all the reasons that have been noted, especially by um, Alder Figaro Cole or President Figaro Cole. But I do want to just note that for me, it also comes down to, I think that the general public and staff will also feel a bit more uh, like we are strengthening our processes to provide checks for ourselves. And sometimes the public and staff may not feel that, that um, that we have that for ourselves. So for me, it's about sending a message to or signaling to the rest of the community that we are strengthening policies about ourselves. So.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Latimer-Burris.
Yeah, I I just want to comment and say I don't think it's about if we know right from wrong. I think that I'm glad I'm going to be supporting it and I'm glad that President Figaro Cole took the opportunity to go beyond, uh, you know, doing a resolution in a previous situation and take action so that we have due process. Nobody gets thrown under the bus without due process. And um, you know, making sure um, you know, things are, you know, listened to, heard properly and whatnot, because the last time it was a big mess. And you don't want somebody to come and say that you did something and you 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 have no protection. We're out there. As all those people say, all sorts of stuff, they make up stuff. You know, they try to get groups to rally and everything, and we've got to have some protection. So I look at this as a two-way protection that, you know, we'll have a defined process to go through. It's something that I'm sure that Attorney House knows that I was upset about it about, because I talked to him about it, and I think that we're taking a step in the right direction. But to act like we don't understand, um, you know, sexual harassment and harassment in general is not, is not what it is. It's that we need to have a process that's solid. And I do, I am concerned about the Chief of Staff having to have all the pressure. Um, but as long as it's done procedurally correct and um, you know, it's done in uh, without the gossip chain, but through the proper channels in confidence, uh, you know, I'm sure that we're going to make process instead of, uh, you know, making it uh, well, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue wishing to speak. What's before us is item one seventeen. The motion is to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption?
Roll call.
A roll call has been requested on item one seventeen. The motion is to adopt. All those in favor? I, those opposed, no, as your name is called, and the clerk will please call the roll.
Thank you, Alder Uguer.
Aye.
Alder Uguer, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney. Alder Harrington McKinney, I do not see, no? Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Knox.
Aye.
Alder Knox, aye. Alder Latimer-Burris.
Aye.
Alder Latimer-Burris, aye. Alder Madison.
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Alder Martinez Rutherford.
Aye.
Alder Martinez Rutherford, aye. Alder Meade.
Aye.
Alder Meade, aye. Alder Rumel.
Aye.
Alder Rumel, aye. Alder Tischler.
Yeah, aye.
Alder Tischler, aye. Alder Verfier.
Aye.
Alder Verfier, aye. Alder Vitterer.
Aye.
Alder Vitterer, aye. Alder Wehelia.
Aye.
Wehelia, aye. Alder Bennett.
Aye.
Alder Bennett, aye. Alder Conklin.
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Curry.
Aye.
Alder Curry, aye. Alder Duncan.
Aye.
Alder Duncan, aye. Alder Evers, excuse. Alder Field.
Aye.
Alder Field, aye. Alder Figaro Cole.
Aye.
Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Govindarajan.
Aye.
Alder Govindarajan, aye. I have eighteen ayes and one no.
Eighteen ayes, item one seventeen passes. Um, and then apologies again for not catching this earlier, but that takes us to item one twenty five. The only appropriate action is a motion for introduction. President Figaro call?
Motion to um,
Introduce.
Introduce.
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce item one twenty five, which is Legisstar eight three eight two zero. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction? Seeing no objection, that item is introduced. Will bring us to the end of our agenda. Are there any additional items for introduction from the floor? Seeing none of the announcements. Seeing none. Alder Uguer, it's your turn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any objection to recording unanimous favor, vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we stand adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Bye bye.